A quorum being present, the annual town meeting, the 381st annual town meeting will come to order. Congratulations on being one of the oldest legislative bodies in the world. Would you all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to ask Reverend Estelle Marjeronas, the pastor at the First Trinitarian Congregational Church, to come up and offer an invocation. Reverend?
Friends, will you join me in prayer, please? Holy God, Spirit of love and life, we thank you for the many blessings we have in our lives, including the fact that we live in Situate. Lord God, help us to be in community as you would have us to be. Help us to listen deeply to one another. Thank you for all of the concerned citizens who are here this evening. Help us to listen for your voice in the conversation. Amen.
Thank you Reverend Marjeronas, Reverend Estelle. I've been advised by the town clerk that the warrant has been properly served. I would entertain a motion to dispense with a formal reading of the warrant. It's been moved, seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, so voted and declared unanimous. I have nominated Peter Topin, Assistant Moderator, for this meeting and would entertain a motion to appoint him. Motion moved, seconded. Discussion there being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, so voted and declared unanimous. Would the Assistant Moderator and the following tellers please stand to be sworn by the town clerk? Susan Frankel, Jack Manning, Linda Plowman, Marla Manier, Richard Harding, Ellen Kelly, Christopher Mararchi, Penny Scott Pipes, Peter Topin, Ann White. Madam Clerk?
And the following checkers as well. Joanne McIntosh, Ellen Kelly, Ann White, Marilyn Ohala, Dick Waterman, Rich Harding, Eleanor Waterman, and Linda Plowman, and John Manning, and Heather Nugent. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear to uphold the job to which you've been appointed tonight in accordance to the Charter and the Bylaws of the Town of Situate? Thank you very much for your service.
Yes, thank you all for your very selfless dedication to keeping this form of government alive. I'd ask the Chairman of the Advisory Committee, Jamie Gilmore, to introduce the board members.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Town Selectmen, Town Administrator, Town Accountant, Department Heads, Committee Chairs, and Members and fellow citizens of Situate. It has been said that democracy, like a precious jewel, shines most brilliantly in the light of an open government. I am both honored and humbled to be here tonight to offer your advisory committee's report. First, I would like to explain how the advisory committee works. As Presiding Officer of the Legislative Branch of Town Government, the Town Moderator appoints nine citizens of the town to serve staggered three-year terms on the advisory committee. The committee conducts hearings, reviews all materials, and makes recommendations to the voters on all articles in any warrant that comes before the voters at town meetings. The committee's comments and recommendations on all warrant articles are published and available in the advisory committee report, which is published prior to town meeting. The advisory committee also oversees the transfer of funds from the Town Reserve Fund. Such transfers are allocated for extraordinary and unforeseen expenditures and can be accomplished without the need of calling a town meeting. In addition, one member of the advisory committee also serves on the Capital Planning Committee. Other members act in a liaison capacity to other town committees, including but not limited to School Committee, Community Preservation Committee, Street Acceptance Committee, Waterways Commission, and Planning Board. Every year, the citizens of Situate are faced with important decisions regarding the investment of funds into the infrastructure of our town in order to maintain and improve our roads, water supply, public safety, facilities, wastewater treatment, and foreshore protection. It is with great care and consideration that the advisory committee reviews such matters, providing recommendations for the future well-being of our town. It is important to note that these are only recommendations, as all final decisions on such matters are reserved for you, the citizens of the Town of Situate. Situate benefits from many hours dedicated by your volunteer committee members. Let me take a minute to introduce them, and before I do, please know that each member brings a unique personal and professional perspective to the issues brought before the committee. They are myself, Jamie Gilmore is your chairperson, Lincoln Heineman is Vice Chair, Anthony Antonello, Jeff Burns, Sean DeLacy, Jerry Kelly, or Gerald Kelly, Mark Sandem, Mike Westhort, and our newest member, Patrice Metro. We thank all the members for the hours of time contributed to the Town of Situate. Your service is greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd ask the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Marty O'Toole, to introduce the Select Board, the Town Administrator, Town Accountant, and Town Counsel. Marty?
Thank you. I'd like to thank the Board of Selectmen, Finance Director Nancy Holt, Town Administrator Patricia Van Kezey, for all the work that goes into this budget season. It's a very busy time of year, and it basically culminates with tonight. So I'd like to introduce the Board of Selectmen first. Vice Chair Anthony Vignani, John Danahy, Selectman John Danahy, Selectman Sean Harris, Selectman Laura Curran, Patricia Van Kezey, our Town Administrator, Nancy Holt, our Finance Director, and we have Town Counsel Brandon Moss, who's, this is his first year with us, same firm but different attorney. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to recognize dignitary Representative Jim Cantwell, who's taken the time to come visit with us. Do you wish to say anything, Jim? Thank you for coming. Under announcements, I do have some. We would like to recognize Superintendent John McCarthy, who will be retiring on June 30th after five years of service, and Laura Harbotl, the Town Planner, who will retire after 20 years of service. This will be their last town meeting with us. I know we've become very accustomed to their assistance and to their wisdom, and I'd like to ask for a round of appreciation for them. Thank you both for your years of service to our town. In memoriam, we've had some losses since we last gathered. Gilman Bates Wilder passed on December 22nd, 2016. Gil, I'm sure many of you knew him, was on the Board of Selectmen, the Advisory Committee, the Charter Commission, the Planning Board, I think the Board of Health, and numerous other committees and boards. John Jack Lyons Jr. passed on January 23rd, 2017. Jack volunteered in the Town Archives in recent years and did great work there. Patricia Jones passed on January 27th, 2017. Patricia also volunteered in the Town Archive for many years and was active in, and I love the name, posh, Preservation of Situate's Heritage. It's nice to think that our heritage is posh. And Patricia, thank you for your work. Also, today, bit of a surprise for some of us, Eddie McGlaughlin, who was on the Board of Appeals for many years, passed today. I just asked for a moment of silent reflection for those individuals, and we can reflect on the wonderful things they did for us. Thank you. We have a couple of upcoming events that I've been asked to inform you about. The Situate Library Foundation will be hosting a fundraising gala at the new building on June 10th. I'm told this event will provide guests with a sneak peek at the library, an opportunity to bid on auction items, and help raise funds to reduce the town's contribution to the building project. I like the sound of that part. That's good. Info and tickets are available on their website, situatelibraryfoundation.org. I also have an announcement that there will be an open house at the Public Safety Complex. The dates for the open house are the following: Saturday, May 13th, 9:30 a.m., 11 a.m., and 12:30 p.m., Wednesday, May 17th, at 6 p.m., and I'm sure everybody would be very happy to show you the beautiful new building. Oh, shipshape day. Oh, and that's printed on your voting cards, I believe, so we want to keep things shipshape. By way of belated introduction, my name is Rich Bowen. I'm the Town Moderator. The Moderator decides questions of order. I do not vote on articles. I'm not the Speaker of the House or the leader of a parliamentary party. I'm simply the parliamentarian. Please let me take a couple of minutes to tell you how our meeting works for those of you who are visiting for the first time. We operate under certain parliamentary rules. These derive from state law, the parliamentary manual town meeting time, the Charter, the Bylaws, and custom. Here's a brief summary. All non-voters, except for professional consultants, advising boards, must sit in the non-voter section in the left front bleacher. That's just right up there. Ordinarily, only registered voters may address the meeting. However, I will assume the consent of the meeting to allow non-voters speak, provided they are duly recognized unless a timely objection is made. Persons wishing to address the meeting must, each time rising to speak, identify themselves to the meeting by name and address. This traditional courtesy shows respect to those present, helps in the keeping of the meeting minutes, and just helps keep things less confused. Speakers representing a board, community group, or client should state this relationship to the meeting. If you are an article sponsor before, or make your motion before you make your presentation. After making a motion, an article sponsor will be allowed up to 10 minutes for presentation. Sponsors of resolutions will be allowed five minutes. Sponsors need not use the full allotment of time. All motions must be seconded, and no motion is in order until it has been seconded. Town meeting members are encouraged to speak from the center microphone. I always try to recognize persons in the order that they arrive at the microphones, but quite honestly, it's easiest to keep track of persons if they line up at the middle. Your choice. Only after recognized by the moderator may a member address the meeting. Shouting out from the floor or speaking without recognition shows disrespect to your fellow town meeting members and will not be allowed. Speakers from the floor are allowed five minutes on the first round of discussion on the article and three minutes on the second round of discussion. A speaker from the floor who wishes to address the meeting for a second time on an article must wait until persons who have not yet spoken have had their turn. Speakers, please confine your remarks to the motion that is on the floor. Do not indulge in personal banter or attack the motives of any meeting member. If you grow weary of the debate and you're anxious to move on, you may approach a microphone, take your place in the line, and make a simple motion, "I move the question." Please remember this very important procedural point. If you make a motion to move the question, you must do so immediately. You can't mousetrap the other members in line by giving your speech and then saying, "Aha, and I move the question." No, that doesn't work. I'll rule you out of order. So just make your motion to move the question right up front. I think you'll find it's always a popular motion. A point of order relates only to questions of procedure and is not a mechanism for reviving an article or prolonging debate. There are no points of information, there's no such thing. A question about an article should be raised only during the debate on that article. On voice votes, I listen to hear whether the motion passes or fails. If you question my vote, if you think I called it wrong or have bad hearing, that's okay. If seven members or more stand up and question my call on the vote, I will call for a counted vote. The tellers will only count those persons seated in the bleachers of the floor sections. Persons standing in the back or standing elsewhere will not be counted. Section 20,150, subsection G of the Bylaws allows the Moderator to declare two-thirds votes. If the Moderator's declaration is immediately questioned by seven or more voters by standing up, as I previously described, we will take a counted vote. The acoustics in the room are bad. There are plenty of seats up in the front of the room if you want to move forward. Please set your cell phones to stun. You know, sometimes you hear very interesting cha-chas or disco tunes when people's phones ring. No, yeah, just put them on silent and we'll be all set. Marty, Mr. Chairman, do we have any honorary resolutions? Any? Nope? Any honorary resolutions? No, okay, thank you. Reports, we'll hear those under Article II of the annual town meeting. All right, it's 7:15. Now, at 7:30, we have a special town meeting. What we will do at that time is adjourn the annual town meeting until the conclusion of the special town meeting, take care of the special town meeting business, and then return to the annual town meeting. But in the meantime, we have some annual town meeting business that we can do right now. So, let's just get this rolling. Annual Town Meeting, Article I, Budget Reconciliations. On the motion, Chairman O'Toole. Ann?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town establish the salaries and compensation of all elected officials as follows, for sum totaling $78,500. Selectmen, chairman and legitimate expenses, $1,500. Selectmen, members and legitimate expenses, $2,000, which is four at $500. Assessors, chairman and legitimate expenses, $1,200. Assessors, members and legitimate expenses, $800, or two at $400. And then Town Clerk, for personal services, at $73,000.
It's been moved and seconded, discussion.
This is a, it's an annual article, nothing changes. Salaries are all the same. We do include a step for the Town Clerk, so.
From the Advisory Committee, Chairman Jamie Gilmore.
Selectman O'Toole spoke very wisely on this. It's just a standard annual. Your advisory committee voted eight to zero, unanimous with one absentee.
Further discussion in Article I. Seeing no one at the microphones, approval of this motion requires majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, so voted and declared unanimous. Article II, Reports of Boards and Commissions. On the motion, Selectman Vignani.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town hear or act upon any reports from the town officers or committees.
It's been moved and seconded, discussion there being none. We have reports that will be coming from Selectman Vignani and Chairman Gilmore. So, Selectman Vignani, go ahead. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Mr. Moderator. And thank all of you for coming to this meeting today and participating in our town government. As I was asked to prepare for this report, the annual Board of Selectmen report, three things came to mind that are going on in the town right now. One is financial stability. The second is capital projects. And the third is work capacity. Before I get to that, I want to get to some of the numbers. I'm a numbers guy. Our budget this year is $54.2 million, of which the school gets two-thirds percent of the available funds, which is about $36 million, and the town gets one-third of those funds, which is about $18 million. I think I said thousand, I meant million, for the school. That's a 3.3% increase from last year. On top of that, there's about $11 million worth of funds that we use in our five enterprise funds, which brings our total budget to about $65 million. Our largest expense is our health insurance, which is $5.8 million. Our second-largest expense is our pension expense, which is $4.5 million. Our largest department is our fire department, and that has a $4.6 million budget, followed by our police department, which has a $3.6 million budget. Our tax rate last year was $14.09. That is the fourth lowest of the 11 communities that surround us. Our average tax bill is just short of $7,500, and that is the sixth-lowest tax bill, average tax bill, of those same 11 communities. Okay, now to get to my thoughts. Financial responsibility. This is the eighth year that the Town Administrator has proposed a balanced budget. They'd either maintained or increased our town services. This is a difficult task, considering the restrictions of the 2.5% levy restriction, or levy limit, and the continued rising expenses, especially in health insurance, pensions, utilities, and the cost of living increases for all the payroll. Amazingly, under these conditions, over the past several years, we've been able to add the following positions to our already talented staff. We've added an IT director. We've added a coastal resource officer. We've added an HR director. We've added a building facilities manager. And this year, we're adding a Director of Planning and Development. The functions of municipal government have changed, and these positions are needed not only to run efficiently and be compliant, but also to be forward-thinking and to be prepared for the future. Some indicators of our financial stability are our very strong bond rating, which is at a double A plus. Standard and Poor's rates Situate with the second-highest bond rating available due to the systems and the practices of our financial team. This rating has saved the town's hundreds of thousands of dollars in interest expense. Also, as indication of our financial stability, is our level of certified free cash. In 2008, our cash balance was minus $108,000. Over the next eight years, that has increased to be $3.2 million last year. This is the result of conservative budgeting and the ability to manage departments to that budget. That level of free cash has allowed us to purchase items without incurring debt, and it's allowed us to put money in our stabilization fund to fund larger ticket items easier. In addition to that, we do a great job getting grant money, and we also do a great job collecting the money that's owed to the town. The second thought that I had was capital projects. The town has probably taken on more projects in the last four years than we've done in the 40 years preceding that. And here are some of the accomplishments that we've had. We just completed our public safety building, and it opened in March. I'm sure most of you have seen that. We're about to open our library, which was started as a renovation, but ended up pretty much being a new build for the library that's going to open in June. When you came in here, I'm sure you saw the New Gates Middle School. That's going to open in September. We've built sidewalks. We've created fields. We've repaired roads. We've done planning and engineering for beach renourishment and coastal resilience. We're in the final stage of replacing 21 miles of old water lines. We've had a number of sewer plant upgrades, and we've rebuilt many, many sections of seawalls and done revetment construction. Each one of these projects alone is a major task, and as you know, we have all of these going on at the same time. Our ability to get grants, as I mentioned earlier, helps us defer the cost of these projects, and our bond rating allows us to get very good interest rates to do this project. So it was a good time to do all of these. On top of all of these projects, one of the board's current top priorities is finding a suitable senior center for the town. This brings me to my last thought, which was work capacity. I think you can see that our town employees have a lot on their plates. We, or mostly they, do an outstanding job maintaining the level of services and meet the needs of the residents. However, our community has a lot of needs. Some people want a new senior center. Some people want seawall fixed. Some people want new roads. Some people want recreational fields. Others want more conservation and less fields. Some want improved handicap accessibility. Some want more green initiatives. Some want to improve the golf course. Some want to improve the harbor. Some want to improve our beaches. Some want more academic curriculum. Some want to preserve historical landmarks. Some want to lower the taxes, and some want to increase services. Some are focused on water conservation. Some are focused on animal services. Some want less development. Some want smart development. Some want to expand economic development. I'm sure I missed many, but you can see that the list is long, and some of them are conflicting. And all those initiatives have merits, they have limitations. And the limitations are money and the capacity of the town to do these projects correctly and efficiently. So, this is a marathon, it's not a sprint, but we, the Board of Selectmen, will continue to do our best to prioritize our efforts and act responsibly in the interest of the entire town. Thank you.
From the Advisory Committee, Chairman Gilmore.
Well, that's a really tough act to follow. There's no need to repeat every detail that Selectman Vignani reported to you. The nuts and bolts are there as far as how our town is run. I can remember being on capital planning in 2007, and yes, there was no money, and we were really kind of wondering how we were going to do things. What you've seen over these past years is a standardized organizational process to make the town accountable and efficient. And of late in the world of politics, that's certainly been the tome. Are we accountable and are we efficient? I think what you've also seen, and what you're going to see going forward, is the move of this town and its culture into a new feel, or a new growth, a new beginning of modern century. The professionalism of the staff, the professionalism of the departments. I toured the public safety facility last Saturday morning and was thoroughly impressed with everything that was only a blueprint when I looked at it at the last time. Your advisory committee is always here asking the question, "Does it make sense? Is it redundant? Can we do it better?" And if it's coming out of your pocket, are we only taking and asking for what we need to get it done? I think you can take great pride in how professional your town employees and volunteers have been to bring us to this point. And I've only been here 32 years now, and I still am thoroughly impressed every year with where we're going. Thank you.
I'd like to ask the Chairman of the School Committee, Janet Taylor, to introduce the School Committee members.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening. It's my pleasure to announce fellow School Committee members Michael Long, Rich Hebert, Mike Hayes, Superintendent of Schools John McCarthy, and Director of Business and Finance Paul Donlin. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this point in the proceedings, I'll accept a motion to recess the annual town meeting until the conclusion of the special town meeting and to open the special town meeting. As of such, a motion has been moved, seconded, discussion there being none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, so voted and declared unanimous. The annual town meeting stands in recess until the conclusion of the special town meeting, and the special town meeting is now open. Madam Clerk, I assume that the warrant has been properly posted, so we'll dispense with those formalities. All right, special town meeting, Article I, Budget Reconciliations. On the motion, Chairman O'Toole.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town transfer the sum of $312,373 for the purpose of fully funding fiscal year 2017 budget as follows. From Widows Walk retained earnings to Widows Walk Enterprise Funds, account number 616-61520, the amount of $15,000. From PEG Access Revolving Fund to SCTV Expenses, account 1159580, the amount of $134,100. From Water Enterprise retained earnings to Water Enterprise Expense, account 65450580, the amount of $110,000. From Streetlight Expense to Information Technology, account number 1155520, the amount of $24,500. And lastly, from Free Cash for Snow Removal Expense to Snow Revol- And lastly, from free cash for snow removal expense to snow removal expense, one-four-two-three-five-two-zero, the amount of twenty-eight-thousand-seven-hundred-and-seventy-three dollars.
Moved, it's seconded, discussion. Chairman O'Toole.
This is an annual housekeeping article. On the last one, our snow budget is level-funded every year, and this year, we had more expenses than last year, so.
From Advisory, Chairman Gilmore.
A routine article to rebalance the budget that we approved in last April's town meeting. Your advisory committee voted unanimously, eight to zero, with one absentee.
Discussion. There being no one at the mics, approval of this motion requires a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, so voted and declared a majority vote. Article Two, on the motion. Chairman O'Toole.
Thank you. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer the sum of ninety-six-thousand-seventy dollars from CPC Open Space Reserve Funds for the purpose of acquiring conservation restrictions, conducting title searches, and funding closing costs for land acquired with community preservation funds. The Board of Selectmen voted five-zero on this article.
It's been moved, seconded, discussion. Chairman O'Toole.
What this is going to do is there's land that's been acquired in the past. I'm just going to quickly go through the properties. This is for conservation restrictions. Appleton, Monsey, Wolf, Jackman, Litchfield, Hennessy, Biocland, Wheelwright, Marachi, Crosby, Hubble, Higgins-McAllister, Nicholas Wade, Litchfield, Lynn, Semensky, and Damon. And this will also fund closing costs and title searches for the Maxwell and Hennessy properties, which are not yet completed, but funds are included.
From the Advisory Committee, Chairman Gilmore.
I just think that we voted unanimously, eight to zero, in support of this article. It is self-explanatory. It's a matter of placing these documents appropriate to the properties that we've acquired. Thank you.
Discussion from the floor, gentleman to my left.
John Jensen, Thirty-Eight Ganin Pasture Lane. Back on October nineteenth, 2016, we were here for a special town meeting, and there was an article about getting the Ellis Estate, what was left of it, back into conservation and have a permanent conservation restriction placed on it. I noticed it was not listed here as one of the properties. Is there a reason why we couldn't have it listed there as well? I mean, we did vote for it.
Let's see if we can get an answer. Ms. Connolly, Chairman of the CPC.
The CPC can only pay for funds for conservation restrictions on properties that it acquired, and the Ellis Estate predated CPC.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Lady at the center, Mike.
Andrea Hunt, Manlot Road in Situate. I was going to ask that same question. If this is funding is only going, then my understanding is for CPC purchased parcels of land?
Correct.
Okay. So, since the Ellis land is not listed, is there a timeframe to go forward with the action that was voted on last October for this parcel of land?
Probably not a question for the CPC.
CPC can't answer that question. It's not within our purview.
Can I ask the chairman, please?
I'm going to refer to Town Council, if that's okay?
That's fine. Town Council.
Brandon Moss, Town Council. That article is a petition article, and it's non-binding.
Could you please explain why that is not binding? That is not what I'm being told by several lawyers and by the Conservation Handbook. And it is still filed as conservation land at the Registry of Deeds in Plymouth.
All right. Just so we're clear on what's happening. I'll allow Town Council to answer the question. I may have a question for him as well. And then we will have to return to the subject of the CPC reconciliations. But Town Council, please answer the question.
So the vote was under a statute that requires multiple votes, and that was the other vote that's required did not happen, so it's non-binding.
All right. Before you run off, Town Council. Were, I can see where this may be going. Were there a motion to amend this article to include the Ellis property among the properties listed? Would that be legally permissible?
It would not, Mr. Moderator.
Could you explain the reasoning on that, please?
Sure. Because this is a Community Preservation Act funding article, the position of the Department of Revenue is that it is not amendable on the floor of town meeting.
Okay, thank you. Lady at the center, Mike.
I don't understand why that is not possible. I understand that it was not purchased with CPC funds, but my understanding is that all land that was purchased before Article Ninety-seven still comes under the umbrella of Article Ninety-seven. And this particular parcel of land is still registered, deeded, and listed as conservation property. The town voted to transfer and restrict it at the meeting last October. That has been filed with the Registry of Deeds in Plymouth.
Okay. I think at this point, we have to accept that as a statement of fact rather than a question within the scope of Article Two. Article Two, as it has been drafted, contemplates only properties that have been purchased with CPC funds. I think certainly there would be scope at some later date for bringing back an article that called for restrictions being filed on other properties, such as the Ellis property. But at this point, because of the drafting of the article, the inclusion of the Ellis property would be beyond the scope. And in any event, it's DOR's opinion, as explained to us by Town Council, that matters that come from CPC and are presented to town meeting constitute basically up or down votes rather than amendable motions. Do I have that correct?
That's correct, Mr. Moderator.
Okay.
So the movement on Ellis land would have to be brought up at another time. Is that correct?
I believe, I believe that's the case.
Thank you.
Lady at the center, Mike.
Yes, Kathy Donahue-Cushing-Lanning. A question through you, Mr. Moderator of Town Council.
Don't go away. Yes, ma'am.
I would like to know if the additional funds of twenty-five-hundred dollars for title search and five-thousand dollars for closing cost are adequate to close on the Maxwell property in this fiscal year?
Brandon Moss, Town Council, yes.
So that you have adequate funding, and it will be done this fiscal year?
There's ongoing title issues, but the numbers are sufficient, in my opinion.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Okay, I think it's safe to sit down now. All right. There being no one else at the mics, approval of this motion requires a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? So voted and declared a majority vote. Article Three, on the motion. Chairman O'Toole.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town establish a Golf Enterprise Capitalization Fund pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws Forty, Section Five-B, for the purpose of allocating funds for future capital and/or debt service for Widow's Walk Golf Club. And the Board of Selectmen voted unanimously on this article.
It's been moved, seconded, discussion. Chairman O'Toole.
So we've just paid off a three-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand-dollar debt that we had on the property, and there are some capital improvements. Most significant is a two-million-dollar irrigation system. So we feel that this should be established.
From the Advisory Committee, Mr. Kelly.
Mr. O'Toole said most of what I was going to say, but I think it should be realized that the Golf Enterprise Stabilization Fund will only be funded by revenues from Widow's Walk, and the fund will only be used for the betterment of Widow's Walk. The club, obviously, the court, the town has invested mightily in the Widow's Walk Golf Course, and it's in need of further maintenance and further betterments to continue to thrive and contribute to the town. The Advisory Committee recommended approval of this article unanimously.
Discussion from the floor. There being no one at the mics, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. All those opposed? So voted and declared unanimous. Article Four, on the motion. Chairman O'Toole.
Thank you. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer from free cash the sum of fifty-one-thousand-eight-hundred-and-thirty dollars for the purpose of paying costs to engage a consultant to conduct a revised analysis of the 2016 NFIP National Flood Insurance Program Flood Maps for submission to the Federal Emergency Management Agency. And the Board of Selectmen voted unanimously to support this article.
The move, seconded, discussion. Chairman O'Toole.
This is the town of Situate's portion. We actually partner up with Duxbury and Marshfield. And this is an ongoing battle with FEMA and the maps. We're still finding, no, they're still finding inconsistencies in the maps themselves.
From the Advisory Committee, Mr. Westhorpe.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Basically, as Mr. O'Toole said, we're just hiring Woods Hole to kind of fight the maps and hopefully shrink the size of the flood plains, which would help, you know, town residents in that flood plain. Advisory Committee recommends approval of this article unanimously, eight-zero.
Discussion from the floor, gentleman to my left.
Scott Greenbaum, Forty Damon Road. As I understand it, the town's already approved the maps. I mean, every time you look at the maps, there's going to be another change, something that we don't like. At some point, we should stop doing this. I mean, the maps are the maps. People have individual problems. They own the property. They can appeal it. But at some point, you know, otherwise, we'll be here every year asking for another fifty thousand dollars to renegotiate the map. And, you know, at some point, I think it should stop. Thank you.
I appreciate your opinion.
Gentleman to my right.
Yeah, Tony Machini, One Forty Hall Street. The revised flood maps. Was that done by, who was that done by? Was that done by Woods Hole Group?
Yes, it was.
So we're having it done again by the Woods Hole Group?
Yes.
Can I ask why?
Do you want? To answer, Town Administrator, to answer the question.
Good evening. Last fall, when we were asked to accept the FEMA maps, we informed members that the maps were still not to the satisfaction of the town, nor were they in Duxbury or Marshfield. And we informed members that we had to accept the maps even though they still had what we believed important errors on them in order for us not to lose our membership in the National Flood Insurance Program. We therefore, once the maps were accepted, could immediately then start to work with FEMA on filing letters of map amendments for those properties that still we believe were mapped incorrectly by FEMA. That is the process that we are in right now. Woods Hole Group has submitted a methodology to FEMA that's acceptable that may result in significant additional reductions to property owners that are still in those flood plains, flood map areas, and paying significant premiums. The town's made this a priority. It will still carry on for a few more months, probably into early 2018. But the town is not going to accept flawed maps that increase premiums for coastal residents.
Gentleman to my right.
So are we saying that we're going back to Woods Hole Group to redo what they did the first time for another fifty thousand dollars? And come up with a different?
Just to answer your question. So what happens is they look at the, I was pretty involved in this. So they look at the maps, they make the corrections that they see. It goes back to FEMA. Then when those maps come back, it's not exactly what Woods Hole Group may have sent them. FEMA then can make their own changes, and this has happened a couple of times. Then they have to be looked at and corrected again.
So is this the end?
We hope so. And it's FEMA who actually does the maps. We put the, Woods Hole Group gives the recommendations in. FEMA adjusts those, and sometimes they don't agree with them all. Then they send the maps back. So it's not that Woods Hole Group is doing anything correctly, just so you're aware.
So let's say after this is done, if, let's say, there's disagreements, then it should be up to the individual homeowner to go and, you know, go ahead and try to?
Yeah, I would agree with that. Once we feel that the town has done everything that they can do, and at this point, we're hoping that this is it, so.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion? There being no one at the mics, approval of this motion requires a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So voted and declared a majority. I will accept a motion to dissolve the special town meeting and reconvene the annual town meeting. Been moved, seconded, discussion. There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Goodbye, special town meeting. Hello, annual town meeting. We left off on Article Three. And on the motion for Article Three, we'll hear Ms. Curran, Selectman Curran. No, just read the header motion, and then we'll take it from there.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town appropriate and borrow or transfer from available funds in the Treasury in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter Forty-four, Section Seven and Eight, and any other enabling authority, the following sum of money totaling for the purpose of funding the costs of the fiscal year 2018 Capital Improvement Plan submitted in accordance with Section Six-Dash-Six of the Situate Home Rule Charter as follows.
All right. It's been moved. There's a second. What I will do, well, what we will be doing going forward, and then I'll return to Selectman Curran, is I'd ask you to turn over to page sixteen of your Advisory Committee handbook. And as part of Ms. Curran's motion, Selectman Curran has moved, you'll see A, B, C, and so forth, all the way through double H. Would anyone like all those, Selectman Curran, to read all those out? No, I thought not. So they're in the book, starting on page sixteen. They're part of the motion. And what I will do after the presentations is I'll go through and ask for holds on each one of those so that if you want to discuss any one in particular, you will have that opportunity. The ones that are not held will be voted, and we'll see how it works. Selectman Curran.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. As part of a five-year rolling plan, this year, our department heads and school administration submitted over ten million dollars in capital needs to continue our forward progress on improving and updating our infrastructure, facilities, and needed capital equipment to adequately deliver services to our citizens. Through a rigorous evaluation process that includes a rating scale and review from our capital planning committee, the final amount before you tonight is stated as in the motion, seven million, thirty-three-thousand-two-hundred-and-seventy-six dollars. Highlights of the plan with high dollar values that you can find described in your advisory booklet are water projects that among them include the need to address potential future drought patterns that we experienced last summer by enhancing the reservoir and bringing additional wells online, substantial improvements to our sewer system that include addressing the infiltration of flow issues coming into our system from the Cedar Point area, and also meeting EPA and DEP requirements to address copper limits allowed within our sewer discharge. Additionally, the demolition of our old vacant police station, the replacement of the school turf field, and a much-needed ADA transition plan to assist us with planning future projects and expenditures to improve accessibility for all of our citizens within our schools and townways and buildings. The DPW also, in addition to the sewer and water projects, has approximately one-point-two million dollars in road culvert in road, culvert, and capital equipment improvements before you. The plan is funded through a variety of means, and I'll let the Advisory Board go through that, with the goal of specifically minimizing adding additional debt and borrowing to our books. This capital plan does address a number of high-ticket items that deserve our attention and support to maintain some of the very basic needs of our town to help plan accordingly in our future. The Board of Selectmen unanimously recommends approval of the motion.
Thank you. From the Advisory Committee, Chairman Gilmore.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Your Advisory Committee reviewed all of the elements. We, the only hold that we had was on the, and it was subsequently removed after further discussion, was on the demolition of the police station. But we did vote in favor of every article, every item here, eight to zero with one absent.
From the Capital Planning Committee Chairman Chris Karsha. No, I don't see him. Oh, I'm, my apologies. Go ahead, Jack. Please, yeah, come on up. Yes, please. From the Capital Planning Committee, Jack Whitaker. Thank you.
Hi, I'm John Whitaker, member of the Capital Planning Committee. We looked at the same list of projects, and we would wish to commend the Town Administrator and the Selectmen for an excellent capital budget. The one item that we do not agree with, and I will offer an amendment in a minute, is Item M, demolition of the former police station at a cost of $250,000. Looking at this, discussing it, our committee voted to not recommend that. The reason is that we feel there should be a comprehensive, complete plan, first for the properties around the existing town hall, the old police station, and the old fire station, that really says, this is what we're going to do with these properties. Right now, there are proposed plans. There's a very, I just read about the other day, for two new traffic circles. There also is no final definitive plan for the former, or the about-to-be former Gates School, nor Pier Forty-four, nor my old friend, the fire station. We would like to see, and we would recommend, that we not take action on this little item M until there's a comprehensive plan. There may be efficiency of scale here, there may be a better way of doing this, there may be a cheaper way. And so with all those things said, we don't recommend Item M. And Mr. Chair, should I offer a formal amendment to this?
No, we're gonna go through and put, to ask for holds.
Oh, okay, I'll do that. Thank you very much.
So we've had preliminary presentations from the Board of Selectmen, Advisory, and the Capital Planning Committee. What I'm going to do now is go through these letter A through double H. If there's any particular item that you would like to discuss in more detail, please just call out hold, and that matter will be held for further discussion. And again, we're on page sixteen of the booklet. A. A is held. B. C. D. E. F. G. H. I. J. K. K is held. L. M. What was that? N. Okay. N is held. M and N. O. I don't know if that was a call for a hold. O. That was a hold, okay. P. Q. R. S. T. T is held. U. U is held. V. V is held. Double U. Double U is held. X. Y. Y is held. Z. Double A. Double B. Double C. DD. EE. FF. Double F is held. Double G. Double H. All right. So the items that were held are A. K. M. N. O. T. U. V. W. Y. And double F. I'll accept a motion to approve all unheld items as printed in the Advisory Committee Handbook. It's been moved, seconded. Since they weren't held, there is no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted and declared a unanimous vote for all unheld items. We now return to the first item that was held, which is A. And I will give precedence, and I'll accept people's word of honor on it, to the person who wanted to hold on A. Is that you, Mr. Kelly?
George P. Kelly, 450 Country Way.
Sir.
I'm bringing up the point that we have just done a sidewalk on parts of Hollitt Street, and it doesn't go from An Vinyl to Country Way, which has a sidewalk. Branch Street, which is right near the library, in fact, and the sidewalk ends, and it doesn't begin again until you get across the street to Beaver Dam, across Beaver Dam Road. And then Beaver Dam Road, the sidewalk ends at the ball field, and it attracts a lot of people. But there's no sidewalk from the ball field down to An Vinyl, Tilden Road. So I feel that some application has to be given to finishing a sidewalk such as Hollitt Street, which connects with Country Way, but there's no sidewalk, and you have the danger of crossing even the railroad track to get from the An Vinyl to Country Way. I won't prolong my comments, other than please give some thought to finishing sidewalks that are in existence before we extend more sidewalks down on, say, Country Way down to Green Bush. Thank you.
You don't want it. Is there any other discussion on A? There being no one at the mics on A. Approval of this item requires a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted and declared approved by a majority vote. The next item held was K. And I'll give precedence to the person who held that. Gentlemen to my left.
Peter Samblom, 16 Mordecai Lincoln. I'm just curious to see, and I'm trying to remember, when was the original turf field put in at the high school?
I hear discussion, trying to get an answer for you.
2002? The school committee says 2002, Peter.
2002, okay. Because the average, I just want to raise that when we do appropriate this money, which I think we should, that the average turf field lasts between 20 and 30 years. And I think as we're looking at maintaining our buildings and our facilities, that the town really focuses, when we put a big capital outlay like this, to really enforce the rules, make sure that the coaches are well-informed, that the gum and the mischief that goes on even during the activities is closely monitored. Thank you.
Is there anyone else rising on K? A gentleman's departing. All right. There being no further discussion on K, approval of this item requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted and declared a two-thirds vote. The next held item is M. There might be a arm-wrestling match to get to the mic first on this one. Gentlemen to my left.
John Whitaker, 594 Country Way. I move to amend Article Three by deleting there from Item M, demolition of former police station, and the accompanying amount of $250,000. If seconded, I'd speak to this motion.
All right. It's been moved, is there a second? It's been moved and seconded. The motion is, to summarize it, to delete Item M from the capital plan. Discussion. Mr. Whitaker.
Just very briefly, I am offering an amendment which would implement the recommendations of the Capital Budget Advisory Committee. We felt it's best to wait on this item until there's a comprehensive plan for that piece of property, indeed for all of the capital properties, especially the old ones that are about to abandon or change. Quite possibly, there are cost efficiencies and other benefits to be derived. There seem to be very little from just waiting, it's simply a matter of closing the building and waiting until there's a plan for everything. And so that's why we're recommending this amendment. Thank you.
Was there another speaker over to the left? No? Okay. Lady to my right.
Good evening. My name is Karen Pritchard. I live at 36 Meeting House Lane. I have had the privilege of serving and chairing the Public Facilities Master Planning Committee and the Citrus Adaptive Building Reuse Committee. Both of those committees looked at the future usability of buildings that we had considered replacing, including the police station. In both of those assessments, we were unanimous, after thorough engineering studies and of the, and the opinions of the professionals that we had on our committees, that this building has absolutely no future use for this town. It does not meet ADA accessibility requirements. It has substantial hazardous waste issues involved, and I think Chief Stewart could attest to the fact that at a minimum, it doesn't have a roof that actually prevents water from leaking in. Any use of, any future use of this building would require substantial investment by the town for even casual use because of the condition of the building. That means that to hold this building up, to delay, to delay demolishing it, would actually require the town to spend substantial sums in insurance, in security, and also in improvements to make sure that we could ensure this building such that we, we could keep the building safe and any casual occupants can be safe. So again, I would conclude that there is absolutely no doubt that this building should come down as soon as a public safety building was up, and that there is absolutely no future use for this building for the town.
Gentlemen at the center, Mike.
Larry Howell, Moreland Road, Citrus. Would the Selectmen like to speak to this particular issue, since they probably have an opinion? I'd like to hear it.
Selectman Curran.
Yes, absolutely, sir. Thank you. As the liaison to the Capital Planning Committee, I'd just like to reflect, the vote was two to three. It wasn't unanimous not to move forward with this, so I think that's worthy of noting. The Board did take their advice into consideration. However, we also feel very strongly that this building is just not suitable for any of our employees to reside in. It's not good enough for our police department, it is not good enough for anybody else and not within our departments to reside in there. Additionally, the liability that it presents to us is wasted money. We'd be paying at least $10,000 a year in liability insurance for a building that was empty. Some of the concerns that were raised to us addressed that the Board has no plan. And I personally resent that comment. While there isn't a plan before you today with what to do with Gates and the town hall lot of property, it's primarily because it's a big-ticket item. Anything that we would do and look at, neither of those two properties, in the next year or two, you can better believe is gonna be more than $20 million. And I personally, along with my board members, are not prepared to put that type of a project before the taxpayers today, especially in view of the last three buildings that we've just built that are beautiful. We need to get them online, get them operating, and understand exactly what the liability will be to us from an operational standpoint. So we also took into consideration the Building Reuse Committee. They have a report that they've published to all of you that is on our town website that does not recommend keeping this building online. So we unanimously voted to support demolishing the police station, the old police station as it resides today, because we don't think it is fiscally prudent, we think it'll become an eyesore, and we also think it will add additional liability to our town.
Speaker to my left.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Phyllis Carleberg, 26 Hughes Road. Is this $250,000 a realistic number, or is that gonna only take down a partial part of the building? Because I understand that there was another look at the building, and it came in quite a bit higher than that.
To answer the question, Selectman Curran.
Sure. So with every project that comes forward, we have to follow state procurement law. This is a quote that we obtained for $250 million. That includes the following, what did I say? Oh, sorry. Yeah, thank God it's not that. $250,000 to demolish it. So yes, that is an estimate that was provided to us.
And what if it exceeds that amount?
We would have to come back and ask for more money, Mrs. Carleberg. Thank you.
Gentlemen to my left.
Joe Gibbons, 223 Gannett Road, member of the Capital Planning Committee. We looked at all these, all these items, and this was the only one that, that really resonated with, with the Board to defeat. Because we need, we need a concrete plan. We don't have a water plan in this town, we don't have a plan for the Gates, the old Gates School, we don't have a plan for Pier Forty-four. And before we start willy-nilly tearing down buildings, and I think, as Phyllis said, I think it's gonna be a lot more than $250,000. We don't think, we're entrusted to look at the future. We're a Capital Planning Committee, we're looking at articles that are over multi-years and, and a lot of money. And we just didn't feel it was financially prudent to do that. We're not saying that that building has any value standing, but we think there are better uses of $250,000 to $500,000 right now than tearing down that building. Thank you.
Lady at the center, Mike.
Andrea Hunt, Ann Lot Road. My understanding from listening to the financial advising on this is, and I may be wrong, but if we hold on this and wait, is it possible that it could be a better price if packaged with removing other buildings in that area? We've not made a decision about whether or not playing fields will go there, or whether or not there's going to be an upgrade to town hall, or whether or not the old fire station needs to be removed. And once that plan is set, if we have a group demolition, would that not be less expensive than trying to do it piecemeal?
So I think that's a fair question. It's not something that has been analyzed yet, and as I said a couple of moments ago, the plan to demolish anything on this property is so many years down the road that it is not fiscally prudent to keep the police station intact where it is today, yet unused. What I also would like...
it was financially prudent to do that. We're not saying that that building has any value standing, but we think there are better uses of $250,000 to $500,000 right now than tearing down that building. Thank you.
Lady at the center, Mike.
Andrea Hunt, Manlot Road. My understanding from listening to the financial advising on this is, and I may be wrong, but if we hold on this and wait, is it possible that it could be a better price if packaged with removing other buildings in that area? We've not made a decision about whether or not playing fields will go there, or whether or not there's going to be an upgrade to Town Hall, or whether or not the old fire station needs to be removed. And once that plan is set, if we have a group demolition, would that not be less expensive than trying to do it piecemeal?
So, I think that's a fair question. It's not something that has been analyzed yet, and as I said a couple of moments ago, the plan to demolish anything on this property is so many years down the road that it is not fiscally prudent to keep the police station intact where it is today, yet unused. What I also would like to clarify is that as far, a part of this $250,000 is $50,000 cost to move the radio software and servers and technology components within that building to a shed behind the police station in order to continue to have proper radio communications between our police and fire safety. So, that $50,000 is also a part of the 250 tonight that you are considering to approve.
But if that police station stayed there, that software could remain right where it is and still be useful?
No, it needs to move. Thank you.
Lady at the center, Mike.
Anne Burbine, 10 Penny Chris Road. I move the question.
Motion to move the question is a motion to terminate debate. Requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of terminating debate on the proposed amendment signify by saying aye. All those opposed, so voted, sorry, so voted and declared a two-thirds vote. That terminates debate on Mr. Whitaker's amendment, and may I read the amendment off? Is that it? The amendment submitted in writing was, sorry about that. I move to amend Article III by deleting therefrom Item M, demolition of former police station and the amount of $250,000. It's been moved and seconded, so the question is whether to approve the amendment which deletes the demolition of the police station from the Capitol Plan. All those in favor of the motion to delete signify by saying aye. All those opposed? The motion does not carry. We return to the main motion, which is as follows. I move to transfer from free cash the sum of $250,000 for the purpose of demolition of the former police station at 606 Chief Justice Cushing Highway. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Lady at the center, Mike.
Anne Burbine, 10 Penny Chris Road. That building is a disaster. It is already an eyesore. There is nothing worse than a vacant, unused building. And if that's what we want to look at, we're in big trouble. The sooner that comes down, the better off we are all going to be. It is a nuisance, and it's ugly, and it's time for us to bite the bullet and get rid of it. It serves no earthly purpose. Thank you.
Gentleman to my left.
John Whitaker, 594 Country Way. Through you, Mr. Moderator, to our town council, is it legal to use funds the town meeting has appropriated to demolish an old police station to move a communications tower? This is a new item of discussion which was never raised by the selectman at the microphone or anyone else or the town administrator during this discussion of this project. We had two long meetings. Not once was it mentioned, oh, X amount of money within the 250 is to move the communications tower. So, can we do that? Can we just appropriate to demolish a building and say, oh, we're going to move a tower with it? And could the selectman or the town administrator please tell us, how much is your estimated cost to move that tower? And how much to demolish the building? Thank you.
All right, we have a compound question here. Town council's come forward, and I believe the question of town council is whether moving communication equipment could be paid for if this motion were approved. So, the motion is, I move to transfer from free cash the sum of $250,000 for the purpose of demolition of the former police station. So, the question is, does that cover moving communications equipment?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. The answer is yes.
Then the next question, and Mr. Whitaker, could you just restate the second question? I think it was the cost?
What is the cost of moving the communications equipment? And then what is the cost of just demolishing the building?
Okay. On the question, Selectman Curran.
Sure. The estimated cost to move the equipment is $50,000, and then the other costs... Excuse me? The balance is 200, which includes removing roof asbestos, damping the roofing on the brick asbestos, and also doing lead abatement, hazmat inspection, as well as emptying the building of all the additional old furniture and fixtures that are in there today.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Gentleman to my left.
Christopher Hartgrove, Manlot Road. I think in light of the fact that money is allocated for the updating of communication equipment for police, fire, and EMS, I think is necessary, because these people's lives and the safety of their people that they have to take care of rely on adequate and updated communication system, and I think that that needs to be addressed positively. If for no other reason.
Sorry, Christopher. There being no one else at the mics? Do you want it? Chief Stewart.
All right, thank you. Having worked in that building for 34 years, what I can tell you is that in order to do anything with that building, to make that handicap accessible, you're talking about gutting the interior of that building. All the interior walls are load-bearing walls. It's carrying the roof. In order to widen those, you're going to have to gut the inside of that building. So, we work, if we tried to retrofit that building rather than build a new building, we were going to have to comply with all that. It didn't make sense for us. I don't think it's going to make sense down the road as a future use for public facilities. I've gone over this with the building inspector and Kevin Kelly, the facilities director, and would I love to see that building re-purposed? Absolutely, I would. It's not worth it. I can tell you that right now. You're not going to want to spend that kind of money for that, so...
All right. Further discussion from the floor. Gentleman to my left.
John Jensen, 38 Gannett pasture lane. If we tear this down, is it going to be filled back in? Is it going to be a giant hole left in the ground? Is it going to be landscaped? Is it going to be a pile of dirt? Is it going to be an eyesore that's like, I've seen buildings torn down and they just leave like gravel there, or they just leave dirt, or they leave construction debris there? And I want to make sure that if we do pull down an eyesore, we're not going to get another eyesore out of it.
To answer the question, Selectman Curran.
I agree with you. We will ensure that when it's torn down, that it's re-seated, and hopefully will be a nice grassy knoll for several years.
No filing space. Lady to my right.
Nancy Marie Young, 161 Captain Pierce Road. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm not going to move the question. I just want to provide a little different perspective. First of all, I think it's really important to listen, no matter how we feel about certain things, to the opinions of at least three committees with a skill of expertise and the chief tell you, this building cannot be used. That's a fact. Imagine if your house was condemned, and you had a large enough piece of property on which to build a new house, but you couldn't live in the old house while your new house was being built. Would it make sense to you to pay to keep your condemned house standing while you continue to pay insurance premiums, while you continue to be responsible if anyone should be hurt on that property? And knowing that whatever it's going to cost you to tear it down today, it will cost you more to tear it down in three months or four months? This is exactly the same situation, and I think, as Selectman Curran has said, it is not fiscally responsible to hold the town hostage to a building and the costs of keeping that building when they're, just simply because we don't know what we're going to do with that property. We know we're not going to use that building. Thank you.
Gentleman at the center, Mike for the second.
Larry Howell, Moreland Road. Move the question.
Okay, well, I don't see anyone else up at the mics, so I think we are ready for the question. The motion that is going to be voted upon is the following. I move to transfer from free cash the sum of $250,000 for the purpose of demolition of the former police station at 606 Chief Justice Cushing Highway. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. All those opposed? So voted and declared passed by a majority vote. 27 people wish to challenge my vote. They may stand now. Oh, it's all right. No, I get that one. Don't worry. Okay. The next held item is N. And the motion on the table is, I move to transfer from free cash the sum of $100,000 for the purpose of school technology in the Situate public schools. Would the person who held it like to... Ah, sir.
Bernie Westerveld, 12 Harborview Road. In light of the $36 million, was it $38 million school budget we're voting on, can you clarify what the $100,000 does?
Yeah, the $100,000 is spent on capital technology. What it does is it puts in the hands of students Chromebooks and Chromebook carts and technology to be used in the classroom. That is not typically funded out of the operational budget, because the capital is good for five to seven years that we use it, so it's not something that we typically would fund out of that $36 million budget. It's funded separately. Six years ago, this community made a significant investment in technology in its schools and the capital investment with a fiber optic ring, wireless technology. Situate went from a school that was probably a 20th century school district to a 21st century school district over the last five years, because this community, every year, has committed $100,000 to invest in instructional technology to be used by students. So, this is computers, Chromebooks, that will be used by students in the classroom.
And there's no room in the school budget to pay for that?
No, unfortunately not. Something else would go.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Lady at the center, Mike.
Question, thank you.
Thank you. Lady to the... No? All right. There being no further discussion. Approval of this motion requires a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? So voted and declared passed by a majority. The next item is O. The motion is, I move to transfer from free cash the sum of $27,500 for the replacement of the roof trim and fascia of the Hathaway School, School Facilities. Superintendent? Oh, okay, my apologies. Lady to my left.
Hi, I'm Stacy Jones Carey, 708 Country Way. My children attend Hathaway School. Last year, we voted on a substantial amount of money to replace the flat-top roof at Hathaway and Cushing Schools. The roof was in severe need of replacement. The building is old, and there were leaks everywhere. It was opened up and patched and not replaced. First of all, I'd like to know when Hathaway will get a new roof, and second, what happened to the money?
Okay, so the first question is, on the motion, when we approved that money, it was to repair or replace. We had to investigate further in terms of where the leaks were coming from, and could they just be repaired or replaced? That actual flat roof is less than 20 years old, so that really has not reached its maximum lifespan, and so to replace it, we would have been replacing it ahead of schedule. When we did the investigation of that, that we looked at and were able to basically repair that, seal it, we've had significant rain and snow since then. That roof has held up beautifully since we made that repair. So, it is in, right now, excellent condition. Those flat roofs, both at Hathaway and Cushing, are in excellent condition because of the repairs we made. The second question was, what happened then to the money? The money was then moved to another article. It was moved to, for a well that is being put in this spring to be able to irrigate the Cushing fields and to provide a backup irrigation system for the high school athletic fields.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Seeing no one else at the mics, approval of this motion requires a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? So voted and declared passed unanimously. The next held item is T. I'll read the motion. I move to transfer from retained earnings in the Waterways Enterprise Fund the sum of $74,000 for the purchase and installation of dock de-icers. And the gentleman at the center, Mike, was the whole D? Is that what you call that?
Bernie Westerveld, Harborview Road.
Sir.
My wife asked me to ask what dock de-icers are.
Do I define it? What defines dock de-icers?
Hi, Stephen Mullins, Situate Harp Master. De-icers, what they are, are small tubes with a propeller and a motor inside, and they take the warmer water from the bottom of the harbor and raise it up and create a flow which does not allow the ice to form. So, it de-ices or keeps that area de-iced.
Thank you. You made my wife happy.
I'm glad.
Well, we knew town meeting had to serve some purpose, so there we go. Are there any other questions on this item? There being none, approval requires a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? So voted and declared passed by unanimous vote. That was an interesting question, by the way. So, the next one is U. I move to transfer from golf course enterprise fund receipts the sum of $25,000 for the purpose of design for replacement of the course irrigation system. So, who do we have on that? Oh, my apologies. Lady to my left.
Mary Kay Feely, 187 Beaver Dam Road. This is a question for all three of the golf ones. Are any of the funds or from the fees, whatever, for the golf course going to be used for any of these, or is it strictly coming out of the town budget?
So, all of these fees come from the Golf Enterprise Fund, so as the fees come in, it pays for operating and capital improvements as well.
All right. There being no one else, approval of this motion requires a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? So voted and declared a majority vote. Did anyone else want to discuss the other two golf course items, V and W, which were held? No? Okay. I'm going to take a combined vote, and I won't read the motion, since you know what it is, I think. So, all those in favor of approving items V and W signify by saying aye. All those opposed? So voted and declared passed by unanimous vote, items V and W. That brings us to item Y. I move to transfer from retained earnings in the Water Enterprise Fund the sum of $200,000 for design and permitting of the Dolan Well Field. And who've we got? Gentleman to my right.
Tony Machini, 140 Hall Street. I actually, way back 50 years ago, was in that area, so hopefully it's okay. But really, I'm talking about X, Y, Z, double A. This town's in need of water. Everyone here knows. We had a water shortage last year. We were almost going to buy some water. So, I'm looking at what's happening with the town. We have building permits, probably, if you look, in the next three years, maybe 400, 450 homes are going to be built in Situate. That's for sure. We need water. So, my question really is, if this Dolan thing doesn't work, do we have other places we can get this water? That's my only question.
All right. A very important... A very important, but also a very broad question, but if someone can give us an answer on that important question, let's hear it and then we can get down to the...
Of the permit, right?
I'm sorry?
Basically, if it doesn't, if we can't build the well there...
Yeah, what happens if it gets, doesn't go through? Got it.
So I can speak high level that we are restricted by the DEP with regards to how much water we can withdraw annually. And we certainly take that into account when we do address new development needs. The Dolan Well is exactly serving that purpose so we can tap into more well water and groundwater to pull more water reserve when our reservoir goes low, as it did last year. And also additionally, there is the Reservoir Enhancement Project that is one of these items that you've asked to talk about as well, that will expand the capacity of the reservoir as well so that we have additional water there to pull from during those, those trying months.
Okay. Because I want everyone to know that this Dolan Well, this property, was taken away about 40 years ago, eminent domain. So for 40 years, nothing's happened. So once again, hopefully, we can't put a well there.
I don't know if it was 40 years. I think I was chairman of the Board of Selectmen in, I don't know, 1985 or 86 when we took it. So maybe I'm just getting old. Anyway, lady to my right.
Hi, I'm Sarah Case. I'm at 81 First Parish. And I was wondering with these water improvements, what's the added capacity that we can anticipate?
Mr. Cafferty.
Kevin Cafferty, DPW. For this, for this particular well that we're looking at, at the Dolan, they had done testing on it years ago and they actually had it permitted. At that point, they were estimating they could get up to between 200 and 400,000 gallons per minute from this well field. So it's a significant well field and it's from a different aquifer from where a lot of our other wells are. So that's what we're doing, this money is to look into starting the permitting system over and doing some test wells and see if that water quantity has gone up or down or what's happened over there.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else? All right. There being no one else at the microphones, passage of this motion requires a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So voted and declared passed by unanimous vote. The next, and I believe final item, is double F. I move to borrow the sum of $2,500,000 for the purpose of infiltration inflow at Cedar Point and to further authorize a treasurer with the approval of the selectmen to borrow said sum. And who've we got? Gentleman to my right.
Yeah, Tony Machini, 140 Hall Street. My question here is, when was this line put in on, in that area, in Cedar Point? When, when was the actual line put in?
Our records indicate that the line was put in between 1967 or 1977. Oh, 1970, sorry. Three years.
Okay. And so the other areas around the coast land, could there be a possibility of problems there also?
Mr. Cafferty.
Kevin Cafferty, Situate DPW. Just to explain what we did on this is, back in March, when it was kind of wet last year in '16, we went out and some people noticed it and called to be concerned about it, is we put a lot of flow meters. We had trucks out and we put flow meters all throughout the sewer manholes. And we did evaluations of where we're leaking for our inflow and infiltration. And then we got a report, we broke it down. We are leaking in quite a few areas. We have a huge inflow and infiltration problem. Out of the areas in our capital plan, there's three areas that we want to address. This is the first area we want to address with a pressurized system so that we'll eliminate a lot of that INI. And by the estimates that we have, by installing this now, we could save up to 40,000 gallons a day. And that's a non, non-storm event, just every day. It's basically an old clay pipe that's down about 17 feet.
So really, my question is, how many of those old clay pipes are on the coastlines?
We have quite a few.
Okay, thanks.
Gentleman to my right.
David Ball, 44 Rebecca Road. This sewer line was put in in 1972. I observed the whole thing being installed. It's a six-inch clay pipe. Each section was about eight to 10 feet long. It was not, the pipe did not have sealing joint units between each pipe. It's what the technology was in those days. Unfortunately, it's leaking, as Kevin Cafferty said. It's down very deep, 16 to 17, 18 feet in places. It's a gravity-fed system that goes down to the Sandhills Pumping Station. Yes, it's a lot of money. It's $2.5 million. But if you have 40,000 gallons a day on a good day going into it, and a whole lot more than that during heavy rains or coastal high tides, that means you have a tremendous amount of water feeding into that system that has to be treated. I was just doing some calculations this afternoon. If it's 40,000 gallons a day and a home consumes 400 gallons of water that's going into the sewer system, that's 200 houses that could be added to the sewer system if this leaking wasn't taking place. So to make a long story short, I'm certainly in favor of this. I would much prefer to see the $2.5 million going into forshore protection, but this has to be done and I, I hope people approve it and go for it. Thank you.
All right. There being no one else at the mics, approval of this motion requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So voted and declared passed unanimously. That completes action on the capital plan.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Before we move on from this article, I just would like a little clarification, if that is at all possible, on O. The replace roof trim and fascia of Hathaway School. At the special town meeting in the fall...
No, I'm sorry.
We can't? No, I'm not suggesting. I just want to know where the money went, which is what somebody else asked.
No, no, the time to have raised that question was during that discussion. Gentleman at the center, mic.
Mr. Moderator, James Hunt, Manla Road. I move to suspend the rules and consider the question under Article 15 at this time.
All right. So is there a second? All right. It's been moved and seconded. The motion is to advance consideration of an article. Requires a second. It is debatable. It is amendable. It requires a majority vote. Discussion on the motion to advance the article. Gentleman at the center, mic.
Mr. Moderator, James Hunt, again. The next article, Article 4, has a budget line item to fund the position created by Article 15. It makes little sense to me to fund the position before the position is even created. Therefore, I, I ask that we move this forward, discuss it, and then fund the position. Thank you.
All right. There being no one else at the mics, the motion is to advance consideration of Article 15 before consideration of Article 4. It requires a majority vote. All those in favor of advancing consideration of Article 15 before Article 4 signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion passes by a majority vote. On the motion, Selectman Danny.
Thank you for coming. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town pursuant to Article 5-1B Administrative Code of the Town Charter, create a Department of Planning and Development and the position of Director of Planning and Development as head of such department and to transfer certain supervisory duties of the town administrator to said position and further to transfer the appropriation of one or more town agencies to another.
It's been moved, seconded, discussed. Selectman Danny.
Folks, first and foremost, I just want to make a mention that my 10 years on the board, we've never asked for this under an administrative code change. And frankly, for those who've been coming for the past 25, 30 years, I'm not sure it's actually been done. This administrative change starts from the 1972 charter, the original charter that was placed in it. There have been some who've suggested that this was placed at the end of the evening. And I want to reassure those people who are here that the agenda set forth for the town meeting is in our general bylaws, Section 20120. And when you're dealing with general bylaws, it's number seven. It's the very last one. You have pecking order of various things. But as I getting to the point, the past 10 years, you know, we've been looking at a lot of different things from a board's perspective. We've looked at to improve the various services within town departments, try to make it more efficient. We've seen a lot of growth and development up until that point. There was a lot of building down in the harbor. We had a lot of 40Bs, various projects, whether it was at the Golden Rooster, whether it was down at Pier 44, whether it was down at the, actually in it, Situate, some development there that was proposed, 21 condos. Welsh Company, people will remember. And then we had projects that were actually built, built downtown. In addition, there are some projects, some 40B projects, that are still pending to be built in this town. Situate Woods, which is on Stockbridge. Herring Brook, which is actually on 3A, close to Kennedy's. And there are proposals going forward with development, 250 units off Booth Hill. So there's a lot of growth and development that was going up until that point in time. And then, of course, the recession hit in 2008, 2009, and the numbers bear it out with the permitting. From 2010 until 2014, there weren't that many buildings, condos, duplexes in this town. 2014, growth started to move in that direction. There was more buil-, building going on, excuse me. And about four years ago, our board during one of our retreats started taking a look at the actual, shall we say, structure of your town government. In order to afford you folks the services you deserve and the efficiency that people often complained about, from going into one department, whether it was the planning department or the building department, going to the zoning board and then having to go over to the Conservation Commission, things were kind of disjointed. So as a result of that meeting that we had at our retreat, we asked the Department of Revenue to come in and analyze your town, analyze the services, try to determine, you know, is our government as structured, should it be improved upon? And a report was issued in 2014. It was to review the organizational structure and budget process. And some of the things that were requested was, we needed a financial director, which we do have now one. We talked about trying to have a human resource person. We actually did that. And also, it was recommended that some of the tasks that the town administrator was handling should be, shall we say, delegated, that she was handling too much, too much of a hub mentality, if you will, and it should be more hierarchical. Well, this board had decided back then, after this report, that it was in the town's best interest to start thinking about the growth and development in light of the fact that we're having more growth and development. Now, many of you probably, certainly, have been talking about the water issue from last summer. And let me tell you, our board was stunned to find out that we were in that situation. During my tenure on the board, we never once had issues about water, although we kept looking for more water. And then we have other issues that we had to take a look at. As I said to you, we have affordability issues. We're at 4.5% in this town, about 350. We need 800. We have issues with sewer expansion that we talked about. We have issues with our businesses. The EDC was put in place by the Board of Selectmen in conjunction with the Planning Board in 2009 to talk about, how do you generate taxes outside of you folks, the property owners? We looked at conservation, the issue of conservation, preserving open space in the West End, but also to help the taxpayers when people go in and say, look, I want to add on to my house. How can I do that without having to get into all these conservation issues? How can you facilitate that? We looked at coastal issues. Let me tell you, we got $17 million between loans, between grants, just in the past eight years, but we need more in order to address not only the seawalls, but forshore protection up and down the coast. We've dealt with the FEMA issue, but you know what? That's going to come back again. And then you had to take a look at, right now, presently, we have coastal erosion on Fourth Cliff. You have Central Ave, which could actually become an island between Hummer Rock and Fourth Cliff. And then you only need to go down during a lunar moon tide to see Cole Parkway, how it's flooded. We have other issues with village expansion. People up in North Situate are looking for sewer. There's a pipe that goes right underneath the train tracks that was put in when the train came. But the problem you have is we have the phasing, the next phase happens to be the tree streets off of Beaver Dam Road. But we also have this, as we just said, water intrusion that we have to address. But with the development in North Situate, it's the same in Green Bush, we, EDC came up with a plan last August to, to address these, to say, hey, here's a vision. But remember, the people on EDC are volunteers, that's the Economic Development Committee. They donate their time, just like you folks are donating your time tonight to try to address town issues that we've raised for the past year, going forward. And the reason why I mention this is, there's also recreation. In the past 30 years, we have not added any fields. Yes, if you go to Cushing, we actually did a new one, but that's not a new field. That was a ball field and also used for soccer. In fact, we lost a field out in front where the middle school is. And then finally, disabilities. We just passed a transitional plan. Many people probably don't realize, the last time that plan was done was 22 years ago, to deal with accessibilities, to try to figure out how this town can make improvements and, and also deal with methodology and, and shall we say, how we go forward with it. Now, I mentioned that by going through disabilities, recreation, village expansion, which is your planning, EDC, coastal, which is your Coastal Resource Officer, or the Coastal Advisory Commission, conservation, the Conservation Commission, business, which really is a category that we all care about, that we want to try to improve, then you have senior housing, which we're going to be talking about a little later on with Situate Housing Authority, then you have sewer expansion, that's a sewer department, water department with, with water, affordability, which is dealing with trust. That's over 10 various entities in your town, and that's just some of them, that deal with all these issues, but they kind of are working within certain silos. And the key about this new position is we're looking for continuity and we're looking for efficiency, to make things better amongst everybody. So what are we looking at? You know, it's the discussion, or shall we say, in your, the explanation of, of what this position's going to do, is it's going to bring it all together. Now, some people out there are saying, well, isn't that what the planning, the planning position is for? And I have to say, Laura's done a wonderful job and she's retiring this year. And you know what? I commend her for it. But the planning is focused on a lot of the planning issues. That's a department. And yes, there is the master plan and there are all these other plans that we have. Well, you know how old the master plan is? 2002, 2003, and 2004. That's when we've approved it. We need to relook at that. There are other plans. I had a whole bunch of plans that I listed out that have been put together over the course of years, whether you're dealing with coastal issues, whether you're dealing with recreation issues, whether you're dealing accessibility issues. And all these plans, they're not just sitting on the shelf. They need to be implemented, they need to be reviewed, they need to be incorporated. And as I said to you, with the planning position, one of the problems you run into is, they're dealing with subdivision issues, rules and regulations, they're dealing with scenic roads. When any issue on the road happens, they're dealing with design review committee that they oversee when something's being proposed. They're dealing with site plan reviews. There's a special permit process, there's also an administrative review on it, flood plane special permit that they have to review, flexible open space special permits they deal with. They deal with common driveways. When you have two or three homes that are built and they have a common driveway, that's a special permit. They review that. They have accessory dwellings that we talk about. They are loaded with a lot of work and they meet twice a month. And let me tell you, it's not like two or three applications. The same thing happens with conservation, two meetings a month and they have a number of them. So our point here is to try to put together somebody who's going to be looking over, shall we say, the mastermind, if you want to say project manager that some people relate to, but somebody who can pot, pull it all together so that when you walk into the building department, they set it up for you and say, fine, you also have to go to planning, you have to go through this process, or you got to go to conservation, so that nobody's getting blindsided after they get their acceptance or their permit. And it makes sense, it makes it more efficient. Now, some people might say, well, isn't that going to make more development? Look, we're... Look, we're dealing with people, common people who go in on the most, most of the time, whether they're adding on to their building or house, or whether they're, shall we say, razing, reconstructing, or they want to put a shed somewhere in a sensitive area, that's what you're dealing with on a daily basis. These big developments, let me tell you, everybody knows about them. You can look at the proving grounds, that's a very hot topic right now. It was fifteen years ago when Polte wanted to put two-hundred-and-fifty units up. And that's going to go through all the boards, all the volunteers, many of which are here. You're going to go through that process and you're going to look at it. So, it's not going to be like, oh, this position's going to grease the skids or make it better. It's going to make it more efficient, but it's going to make it much, shall we say, streamlined. So you don't get into, why didn't they tell me that? How come this person didn't say this? You know, earlier, somebody had mentioned in the process, comprehensive, complete plan, and that was with the demolition of the fire, uh, police station. Well, you know what? That's what this position is going to help you folks out with. Whether or not we're going to have more growth and development in North Situit with the sewers, so we have business up there, whether you're going to have mixed use, smart growth is what we're talking about, with no urbanization but more of villages, where you have some homes and you have some condos, that you have some senior housing and you can also have affordability next to your places where you can shop, whether it's the Situit Market or whether it's up in North Situit, or even in Green Bush. That's what this position's going to do, it's going to make sense. And I think the other thing that's imperative that people have to understand is that this is going to be a person who's going to be looking over the building department, the zoning department, the planning board, and the conservation, including the coastal resources. These people don't have to wait and say, I'm going to meet with the town administrator who has twenty-nine other heads, twenty other positions she has to meet with. And it's a recommendation, not just by the board, but by the Department of Revenue in two thousand fourteen, that said, this is a good thing for your town if you go that direction. So, it's our board's position, and we hope that you will support it, to do just that, because going forward, there's going to be more growth and development. We see that since two thousand and fourteen, and you're hearing it. You're hearing about those developments that are coming on board or coming online. And the other last thing is this, we can all be worried about, oh, all the open space or all the land's going to be built on, the ones that are vacant right now. The real thing that's going to happen in the future is, when that's all filled up, they're going to go back to the other lots, the smaller homes, start tearing them down, building bigger homes. And some people are complaining about that around the town. And that's where, you know, this position's going to help, so that you have good designs, so that you're not going to be having maybe the density in some locations, like the overlay districts, which are in the business centers, that's where you want the density. If they're outside of those zones, that's what you're looking for. And this gives you that continuity. I hope you support it. I know you probably have some questions, and we're happy to answer it. And I thank you for your attention. Thank you.
With the town accountant, the town administrator, planning, if you look at what's printed, I think you'll find a decent synopsis of all the reasons why we need to add a professional person in this capacity, somebody that is trained, that is qualified, to unify all of the departments in this, in this great town that deal with planning. That goes right back to my modest report to you all at the beginning of the evening. This will bring you efficiency and accountability going forward, kind of in a more modern way than we've ever experienced. The comment that the town administrator has twenty-nine different other capacities that she is responsible for and are answerable to her is true. And you see in our writing here about the two thousand fifteen DOR study that said, most towns of our size going forward have a planning professional. So I look at this as consistent, and your advisory committee does too, it's not an I thing, consistent with efficiency, accountability, and moving Situit into the modern age. And I think you'll find a lot of benefits, and your advisory committee voted seven to one with one absentee. Thank you.
Discussion from the floor, lady to my left.
My name's Jean Riley, I live on Old Elgin Bucket Road. I, my question was about Article fifteen. At the beginning of the night, when you outlined all the new administrative positions, he said, and we will have a new director of planning, so it seemed as if it was already in, done, a done deal. So, I also wanted to know, what does, it says that it's pursuant to Article five, what does that have to do with Article five, which is about the Waterways Enterprise Fund? It doesn't make sense. And, one more thing, it doesn't outline what that position would be paid, what the cost to the taxpayers would be.
Okay, we've got several questions, uh, let's start with class to the taxpayers.
The question, alright. So, the position is for eighty-six thousand dollars. Sixty-five thousand is in the budget presently that we're talking about. The, um, the job description is actually, it was given to all, everybody when the budget came out, came out in December. If you grab the annual book, it's there, I think it's on page one sixty-one, it goes through it, tells you exactly, from one sixty-one to one sixty-eight, the position, and tells you the duties, the requirements, and what the expectations are.
And ma'am, what was, what was your other question about?
I asked, what, why does it say it's pursuant to Article five? Article five's about Waterways Enterprise Fund.
Oh, I see.
I guess I'm not going to, it's Article four is what we're looking at, and I think the reason why it's raised is because the, the funding is coming from the budget itself, which is Article four.
Right.
And as Mr. Hunt had said, said earlier, the reason for raising, why are we voting the position and putting the money in before we talk about the position? And that's, that's the reason why we're talking about it now.
Okay.
So I think we're okay. Lady to my right.
Nancy Murray Young, one sixty-one, Captain Pierce Road. I don't know about you, but I would vote for this position simply because Mr. Danny, he scared me to death, okay? Talking about all of the things that need to happen. And it's not just about efficiency or moving us forward, it's about recognizing the fact that the majority of decisions made in the town, the, the day-to-day things that have to happen, only have a few people looking at them, and the rest of our town government is us and many, many people who volunteer hundreds of hours. This position brings a skill set to what's going on in town that balances the scales a little bit more, brings someone who can come in, not just to do the job, but who knows how to do the job, and who will come in and bring a different viewpoint, maybe some information that we don't currently have. Personally, I don't understand why we haven't done it sooner. Thank you.
Before I, before I recognize the lady to my right, the previous speaker over here had made, asked why the reference to Article five dash one B, and I, now I understand the question. That reference does not refer to the warrant, it refers to a section of the charter, which somewhat confusingly is also called five dash one B, and that's the administrative codes section of the charter found on page ten of the charter. So, just in case there was any misunderstanding on that point. Lady to my right.
Uh, thank you. Sarah Case, eighty-one First Parish. I was wondering to whom this new person would report?
On the question, selectman Danny.
Town administrator.
So it seems as though the town administrator is currently overwhelmed with a number of direct reports, and there's an opportunity for maintaining checks and balances, and I believe the Economic Development Commission suggested that this person report to the planning board, has that not been considered, or is that an option?
Um, I'm not aware that the EDC actually recommended that. The way that the structure is under the charter is it's, it's under the town administrator who's underneath the Board of Selectmen. And so the reason it makes sense to have town administrator administrate this position is you've got the building inspector, you've got the zoning enforcement officer, you've got the planner, you've got conservation agent, you've got the coastal resources officer, all of which are underneath the town administrator, as opposed to now saying, let's take that position, the new position, put it over here, and then there's no accountability, it goes from literally Board of Selectmen, town administrator, to the department heads. And in this case, what we're doing is, instead of trying to crossbreed, if you will, we're trying to say, okay, we're going to take these four different positions, these four different departments, put them there with somebody directly over them, because they're all interrelated on the issues, which makes a lot more sense than to say, why don't we have this person talk about conservation issues to the TA, and we'll have this one talk about zoning to the TA, when they should be talking across purposes to make better sense, so that when we do change a bylaw, or we do decide to say we're going to have an overlay district, it's, it's all within that development for economic purposes as well as residential purposes. So from our perspective, that's how we see it, as being prudent and, shall we say, it makes, makes better sense. Because again, the EDC is under the Board of Selectmen also. So, that's why I say from the hierarchy, it just makes better sense that way.
And, and I understand why, why those department heads would be moving under this new position. My question is actually, and can this person report to the planning board since they will be responsible for planning and development? And maybe it's better for me to suggest an amendment to that effect.
Okay, let me intervene right there. This article deals with an action under section five dash one B of the charter, which allows for the Board of Selectmen to create a new administrative section. And, very, it's kind of long and small printish, but if I may read the operative section. "An organization or reorganization plan shall become effective at the expiration of ninety days following the date of the town meeting at which the proposal was submitted, unless the town meeting shall, by majority vote within that time, vote to disapprove the plan." Now here's the key part. "The town meeting may vote only to approve or disapprove the plan and may not vote to amend or alter it." And that's right from the charter.
Got it. Thank you.
But Mr. Moderator, if I could just address one thing?
Well, no, no, we've got people stacked up, so, gentlemen at the center, Mike.
Mr. Moderator, James Hunt, Manla Road. At very great risk of having to sleep on the couch for the next good while, and to the great consternation of Mr. Antonello, I rise to support this article. My formative years were spent in a very unique branch of the federal government known as the United States Navy. And in those twenty-five years, I served in eleven different commands, including in two command positions. In each of those commands and in each of those instances, the guy at the top, or nowadays the guy or the gal at the top, had enough department heads and enough assistants and second-level persons of responsibility, so that at no time was the commander or the guy or the gal at the top responsible for every single daily detail of the day-to-day business of the unit. I note that the superintendent of schools has an assistant and six intermediate-level management personnel and department heads in each of those six units, such that he can exercise a pyramidal form of management, which seems to work quite well. He has over four hundred personnel under his command, and I believe the town has three hundred municipal employees. Our town administrator, the person at the top, is, is required to manage twenty-three direct reports without any intermediate level of management authority. That can't work. In, when the charter was written in nineteen seventy-two, the population of this town was twelve thousand people, we're coming up on twenty thousand now. We are developing, we are economizing, we desperately need to streamline the form of management. If, either that or we change the form of government, and I'd be happy to speak on that when the occasion arises. So, in order to meet the conditions in the twenty-fourteen or twenty-fifteen DOR review, which I have digested, it is imperative that a second tier of management talent be installed such that the person at the top can adequately manage in that same pyramidal form. Thank you.
A gentleman to my right.
Steve Bjorken, thirty-eight, Lads Way. That's a tough one to follow, Jim. But the army doesn't work if you don't have guys on the ground. And the problem that we have in this town is that every department is overloaded, and they need help with inspections, they need help at the Board of Health, the Conservation Commission, the Building Department, everybody in that town hall that works in every office needs people to help them get the job done. I'm in, I don't work at the town hall, but I'm there almost every day, okay? There may be a time when this position is needed, it's not right now. We just built a school, we just built a library, we're tearing down police stations, ugly buildings, we're doing all that. We don't have this person. But yet, town meeting is able to make those decisions without that person, okay? I built houses in town, most people know that, they know who I am, and I can tell you, when the local builders look for inspections, we have to wait to get those inspections. It takes longer now to do it, maybe because there's more houses, but also because people are getting overloaded. When I read what's in, and I'll do this quickly if I can, if I read what's in the town charter under section four-point-two, powers and duties, it is, the town administrator's job to make sure that there's a personnel director, okay, it's, she's the personnel director, and she takes care of those issues. We now have someone that can do that. We have a public facilities manager, which used to be the town administrator's job. "The town administrator undersea shall exercise general supervision over all town agencies for which the town administrator is the appointing or employing authority." I heard this woman here, I don't know your name, and I mean no disrespect at all, but she made a statement that we don't have professional people making these decisions. Well, I just want to say, we have a professional conservation agent, who we hire and we pay to take care of conservation issues. He needs help. We have a town planner, which we're losing, I guess, but I've been in her office almost every day since she's been here, she is overwhelmed with the workload, and it keeps getting larger and larger every day. Somebody to tell her how to do her job is not the solution for this town. Solution is to fix what's on the ground, and I would say postpone the article and come back if we need it in the future. Thank you.
Gentleman to my left.
Peter Samblam, sixteen, Mordecai Lincoln. I just want to clarify, the, the salary for this position is eighty-six thousand dollars per year?
Yes.
And this year would be about sixty-five thousand that is being covered by existing budget?
Yes.
So, in this, it says that it's almost revenue neutral, and to me, when government officials talk about almost being something, it's like almost being pregnant. It's either you are or you're not. And will this remaining, or existing, or additional twenty-one thousand dollars per year be absorbed in future budgets without tax increases?
The actual number is about eighty-three hundred dollars, that's going to be absorbed in future years, in the budget.
So that means there'll be an additional fifteen thousand dollars?
No, eight thousand three hundred.
That we'll have to come up with?
Correct, out of the budget. Correct.
Gentleman to my left.
Scott Greenbaum, forty, Damon Road. I have a question for the moderator.
Sir.
Uh, what would be the process of modifying the salary for this position, since you have to make a motion at the beginning of your talk?
Um, well, an interesting question. While you can only take a straight up or down vote on this article, you know, whether it can actually be filled will depend on the amount that you appropriate in the annual budget.
All right, then probably I can go. Um, eighty, this, I, I support the overall concept of this position. I have a great trepidation about finding a person that will, for eighty-six thousand dollars, that will have the skills, the background, and stuff to perform what is being asked for them. This is, eighty-six thousand dollars in the development world is not a lot of money. I mean, this has got to be a person, if we're going to get value out of this, that has significant- that has significant time on the ground doing this work, understands all the pieces that go together, and eighty-six thousand just doesn't make it. I'm thinking that we need to get somewhere around a hundred and twenty-five thousand, or we're just hiring a rookie out of college, and that's not going to do us any good. We may as well leave it as it is. So if we're going to consider filling this position, we need to fill it with a qualified, well-educated, with a good background position. Otherwise, it's a waste and we'll just be wasting our time and effort.
I think I heard a question there regarding the ability to fill the position.
Just quickly to your question. There was a study out of eighty-six communities. And of course, the minimum amount was fifty-seven thousand five hundred. The maximum amount was a hundred and thirty-six thousand. The average is eighty-three thousand, and that's what we're looking at, the average. We're not looking for some rookie right out of high school or college, or somebody with, you know, right out of their master's program. We're looking for somebody who's going to have some experience, who's going to come to the community and say, "I'm looking at this." And, you know, we've been pretty good with our Department Heads so far, and I've been proud of them. And you know what? I'm pretty confident we're going to get a good person to come in this position, because Situate is such a plum.
So, okay.
Well, at eighty-three thousand dollars, they won't be able to afford to live here. So we should be hiring people that can afford to live here if they're going to deal with our problems. So, and I don't know why we're way below the average of that study. And so that's my opinion. And if we get... What do we do if we can't find a person qualified? I mean, we're hiring a new school superintendent. I believe that's well in excess of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This position's going to have similar responsibilities. Would not be appropriate to pay this person as much as the Town Administrator, but, you know, this person should be paid somewhere in the range of the Fire Chiefs and the Police Chiefs. And it sounds like you're greatly shorting this person, or we're going to be greatly shorted with getting a quality person. We need somebody that's been out there for twenty years and they're not going to take a job at eighty-three thousand dollars. Either that, or they just don't have the quality. Thanks.
Gentleman to my left.
Yes, my name's Anthony Antonello, and I live at thirty-four, Maran Road Extension. I'm also a member of the Advisory Board, and I was the, you know, voted against it as a member of the Advisory Board. I was also the DPW Director in the Town of Citrus for thirty-two years. I was the first DPW Director. And I worked with nine, ten Town Administrators. And I thought we always did a pretty good job of planning with the Town Administrator. And I think that's how it should continue. Thank you.
Lady at the center, Mike.
My question and concern on this is...
Could you identify yourself?
I'm sorry, Andrea Hunt, Manlot Road.
As if I didn't know who you were, but...
That's right. Mr. Bjorkland may have to build a shed for Mr. Hunt soon.
No, no, I did mourn against those sorts of remarks. So I'm sticking up for you, Jim. I'm sorry.
There is no question in my mind that the Town Administrator is overloaded and all of our boards are overloaded. But I agree that we do need troops on the ground to be looking at all of this. Without a Charter Review and without changing our form of government, I don't think that we're prepared for this Department Head. If we are going to hire a Department Head to be in charge of planning and development, we need somebody who is very good, very sharp, and somebody who does not have to have to report to the Town Administrator. If the Town Administrator is that overloaded and the boards cannot handle the situation, then we need to have a Department Head that is independent of being able to go to her and just putting another rubber stamp on something. I think that this needs a little more evaluation. My feeling is that this is probably a good idea, but I don't think that it has been looked at and evaluated and considered with everybody's opinions and taking a full look at how this would respond to the workings of our Planning Board, Board of Selectmen, and the town of... form of government that we have right now. So I guess my question is, to be able to not have this person report to the Town Administrator and have to involve her if we're going to hire somebody that is qualified to take these situations and plan them, what do we have to do? Do we have to change the form of government? Or do we just have to change something in the Charter?
Oh, a question. Someone's pointing at me. Well, okay, I'll take a stab at it. Look, you have a periodic chance for a Charter Change coming up. You can take a look at reorganization through a Charter Change. You can do a Charter Change through a Charter Commission, go through the formal process. You can do a Special Act Charter Change. Those are two different ways of accomplishing a reorganization.
And when are we having our Charter Review?
I'm sorry?
When is the Charter Review?
Gosh, I'm not sure when our next one is due.
It's overdue, so if it is overdue, then it's possible that we could wait and put this position after we've had a better chance to look at this and make a Charter recommendation to have this department in a position where they don't have to answer to the Town Administrator? Is that correct?
That would work.
Thank you.
Gentleman to the right.
Stephen Goddard, forty, Vinyl Ave. My question on this is, I understand the salary's eighty-three thousand dollars. But I'm just doing a comparison to, like, the facilities. Who do a great job, I'm not saying that. But we did the same thing with the facilities in that, you know, I'm just wondering, in the long term, in three or four years, is there going to be a Department here that we're asking for a million dollars? Or are we just asking for this specific salary in the long term? That's all I'm asking.
Selectmen Dan, he on the question.
It's a position, that's what we're looking for. Now, if you begin to say that you're going to reorganize the various Department Heads into the bigger Department, that's going to be in the future, if somebody wants to do that. But the Board is looking at this very judiciously and saying, "This is a problem the town has had for the past fifteen years with growth and development. These are the concerns and people and complaints people have raised when they've come to town, gone to the various boards and commissions. And this is one way that the Board is looking at it to try to improve the system." And this is not about creating a million-dollar budget. It's about getting a person who's going to be the string, if you will, as you pull that shoe together, the continuity to understand when you go into one Department, everybody across that board's going to understand the zoning bylaws, understand the Wetland Protection Act. It's going to understand the Building Code. And also, the Architectural Access Board, which is dealing with accessibility. I mean, if I showed you the zoning booklet that I had when I was on the ZBA in 2001, it was about that thick, it was very small. Now it's that thick. Later on today, we're going to be talking about a... or tonight, we're going to talk about a moratorium on marijuana. Instead of just saying, "We're taking a moratorium on marijuana", we're not going to do it, whether you vote it yea or nay, in one sentence, it's actually like two pages. And that's going into your zoning regulations. We had stormwater bylaws and review, multiple pages. So things are much more complicated and regulated. They're not as simple as they were twenty-five years ago when you have changes in the Building Code and you have changes on coastal issues with the ESCO. So that's why I say to you, this is a very valid position that will benefit the town, especially with all the growth and development from developers who are coming in trying to build on postage stamps, you know, to maximize. So again, it's up to you folks. You know, we're going to vote it up one way or the other. The Board, you know, we've been looking at this for a number of years. We think it's a good thing for you folks and for the rest of the residents of the town. If you decide to vote against it, so be it. We should move on to the next article. But I can tell you this right now, I don't think it is. I think, you know, as Mr. Hunt said, it's a very valid position that's going to help you and help the town out, not just for this year, but for the years to come with the growth and development and all the issues that we've been talking about for the past five years, trying to avoid those issues in the next twenty and thirty years. Thank you.
Gentleman at the center, Mike.
John McGlaughlin, one sixty, Turner Road. I listened to what they said, and about six months ago, I met with the Chairperson, the Chairperson of the Board, and Tricia, and the Building Inspector. I'm the Commission on Disability's Chairperson. I've been trained extensively. So I'm all for the transition plan. Because in 1995, when they had it, it only focused on certain buildings of the town. It didn't focus on the school. It didn't focus on the roads. It didn't focus on education, transportation, emergency evacuation plans. These are all things that the Commission on Disability is an advocate for and tries to get it in place. If this, it works, you put that in first, and you also want a self-evaluation plan where the town says, "We see this already." The transition plan comes in and confirms things and says you have like seven years a timeframe to do this. I feel that it's better to get that in place up and running first, and maybe in a year or two down the road, incorporate this, because the person has a working plan ahead of time and the town was on board for this. And that's my comment.
Gentleman to my left.
Rich Travis, fifty-seven, Old Oak and Bucket Road. I want to speak in favor of the article. My perspective is that the Board of Selectmen have done their due diligence. They've described the need for this director planning. They... I put a great deal of trust in the Advisory Committee and their support in the article as well. So I just wanted to speak in favor of the article and provide my support. Thank you.
Speaker to my right for the second time.
Steve Bjorkland, thirty-eight, Lad's Way. What was the vote of the Board of Selectmen on this? Four to one. Who voted against this? Marty O'Toole. Could we hear from him as well?
He has a guilty look on his face as he comes to the mic. Mr. Chairman.
Yes, you know, I do, I believe the position is needed. I just don't think it's needed at this time. I believe in the idea, but I just think we're a little bit premature. That's all.
And again, I hold that same opinion, again, being in the Town Hall each day. And Jim, I would build you a shed, but I don't think I can get the permit. Again, please, send a message and tell them that we need the help on the ground. And let's come back next year or the year after and fill this position. Thank you.
Gentleman to my right.
Bill Ludlow, two forty-one, Country Way. A lot of people have volunteered information that affects the Town Administrator. I was wondering if it would be reasonable to ask the Town Administrator to address this question.
Madam Administrator.
I really don't have a lot more to add other than the handout I think that was provided to you. The survey we did showed over eighty-three communities, mostly in this eastern part of the state, have this position already. I agree with Mr. Bjorkland that the staff is overwhelmed. Every department's overwhelmed and every department needs more support staff. And in fact, we have increased the part-time staff in conservation and planning in the FY18 budget, when you review it later, because we listened to Mr. Bjorkland when he came, when the public hearing was held. So I do not disagree with them, but in fact, we have increased them. I have twenty-three direct reports. That's not anything the Board gives me. It's under the Town Charter. And so we had that DRR study done in 2015 to find out what was the best way to organize the town for more efficiency. And we have a great development and review team that meets every two weeks that our retiring Town Planner, Laura Harbottle, coordinates. But day-to-day, nothing's going to happen with the visioning plan for Green Boister North Situate. Nothing's going to happen with the long-term planning to look at the recommendations about the fact that we have eighteen different zoning districts in town. Nothing's going to happen about coordinating our new coastal resiliency plan, because no one person has the umbrella responsibility to be the ones to keep all those things in mind. We have a new open space and recreation plan. We have a new hazard mitigation plan. But no one person is charged with seeing the big picture. And whether or not you vote this up and down, I'll be okay, I'll still be at work tomorrow. That's, it's just my job to recommend stuff to the Board and the Town Meeting. But twenty-three direct reports is not sustainable for your Town Administrator, and it's not the best way to manage the town. And it's my job to recommend things that can do the town better in terms of overall management. I do think we've done our due diligence. We did a full job description. Planning Board, Conservation unanimously supported this position, the Economic Development, the Advisory Committee. If you don't want to do it, I respect and honor that. But I think it's time that we need to look at our development in a different way, because we don't have any land left. So people are demolishing buildings and they're trying to develop on marginal pieces of land near wetlands. And we need someone to work on the big picture of looking at our zoning and looking at how development occurs. Because you shouldn't need a lawyer in this town to put a deck on your house. And that's what prompted this. Thank you.
Lady to my right.
Hi, Jennifer Kuhn, I'm at twenty, Cary Litchfield Lane. And I just want to make sure everybody saw the job description, because you really need to see this before you do vote on it. And this is the first time I've seen it, and I was just a little surprised with a few things. So, that's it. And then I'd like to move to question.
No, I'm sorry. Did you say you had a question?
Oh, can we, well, yes. I can't answer it. Oh, I can't do that. Okay. Does anybody see the, I guess it's a question to everybody voting.
Well, it's a rhetorical thing, I can't take a vote on whether everybody saw it. Sorry. But you, I think you made your point. Gentleman to my left.
Yes, good evening, I'm Steve Pritchard, I'm the chairman of the planning board, and we have a number of members of the planning board here tonight. I just want to let you know that the planning board did review this, and was unanimously in support of this position. We look at it as sort of two issues. One is, and I think it's been said here many times, that twenty-three direct reports is way too many. But the second, and probably more important issue here, is that we see a lot of development work that comes through the planning board, and we often get sort of surprised where things get held up, or where there's, where there might be miscommunication between individual boards, in terms of development projects, or even single-family homes that are being permitted. And we see the need to have this ongoing coordination between planning and conservation, and the building department, and the Health, the Board of Health. Having some way to coordinate the review of projects and activities would be very important for us. We've, we've had a number of projects that have come through in the last year, where we've suffered from that, each one of us sort of in our silos. The other piece of it is that we see this as just a coordination, sort of staff position. It's really not a position on the planning board. The planning board is an elected board, and, and we have our, our charter and our charge, which includes updating the master plan, and we would see this as a tremendous help in coordinating that effort, and getting that effort going for the town as well. So, I just wanted to mention that, that we've looked at this, and, and as I said, the board is in support of this.
Gentleman to my left.
Frank Snell, chairman of the Conservation Commission and stuff, I don't need to repeat a lot of things that Mr. Pritchard just said. We also unanimously endorse this position for much of the same reasons. The complications in rules, regulations in the town, just most recently adopting a stormwater bylaw, increases the complexity of filing, building permits, applications, approvals, things like that. And it gets complicated, and sometimes confusing. To have a person that would work between the boards would certainly go a long way to helping some of the situations that come up. It's, I don't disagree with Mr. Bjorkland that help could be given to multiple folks, the administrative assistants in those offices work hard, the agents, planners, they all work very hard, they all do a good job, and the town administrator's working very hard. And sometimes to get to the town administrator with some questions or, or issues is, is hard, is, takes time, because there's a lot on her plate. And so we see this as a way that maybe things could get moved along a little quicker, things could get resolved faster. I look at it a little bit like the DPW. There's a highway, sewer, water, parks, all those things, and they answer to the head of the DPW, and then on from there. And I don't think that this is any different. The town has grown, there's more people in those departments, and, and I think a person in charge of those would be beneficial. Thank you.
Gentleman to my left.
John Jensen, 38 Ganpass Lane. I have a question for the administrator.
Go ahead, sir.
So, assuming that the charter was allowing this, would you be comfortable if this department and director was created, did not report to you, reported someplace else? I'm concerned about balances of power, and checks and balances, and I just worry about, you know, having more people reporting to you. Would you be comfortable if they reported someplace else than you? Again, assuming the charter would permit it, or if we have to change it.
Selectman Danny, he's going to answer the question.
So, the town administrator works for the Board of Selectmen, and either way, the way that we, as a board, have looked at it, feel that this is the right structure for answering from the proposed Director of Planning and Development to the town administrator, and makes it accountable. You know, whether she believes in it or doesn't, that's not her position, she does the bidding of the board, and that's what the board has done, and that's the reason why the board has taken the position, and has, and putting this position there. And I think, you know, as the chairman said from the Conservation, the good analogy is the DPW, Department of Public Works, same type of thing, all that falls under the DPW, which helps streamline the various issues with the Department of Public Works.
I would like to point out to everybody that, you know, we're talking about doing one position here. In fact, it says to create a Department of Planning and Development in a position. So, we all know, departments grow, departments need budgets, departments need more hires, so just think about that. Thank you.
Lady at the center of the mic.
Anne Burbine, 10 Pennycrest Road. I move the question.
Motion to move the question is a motion to terminate debate. If you're in favor of terminating debate, you vote aye. If you want to continue debate, you vote no. Requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of terminating debate on this article, on this motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? I declare that the motion to terminate debate passes by a two-thirds vote. We now come to the main question, which was to create, well, it's in Article 15, I'm not going to read it. All those, it requires a majority vote for approval, all those in favor of the motion made under Article 15 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
I'm in doubt, I'll ask for another voice, and if I can't make a determination, I'll take accounted vote. So, get your best leather lungs in condition. All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
I can't tell. Would the towers take their places, please? Good job on the shouting, though, that was... You have pink voting cards, and when the time comes, hold it up. Everybody ready? All those in favor, hold up your voting card. We all set? Okay. Oh. All right, nobody else counted up here, right, except for Penny?
Yeah.
Great, okay. All right, I'm going to call for the votes on that one. Right rear bleacher.
Eighteen.
One eight. Right front bleacher.
Twenty-one.
Two one. Right rear floor.
Seventeen, one seven.
One seven. Right center floor.
Twenty-three.
Two three. Right front floor, including the advisory committee and school committee. And the selectmen. Three one. Left rear bleacher. One three. Left front bleacher.
Four.
Four. Left rear floor.
Two zero.
Two zero. Left center floor.
Ten, one zero.
One zero. Left front floor, includes the moderator, no it doesn't, clerk, not the selectmen, and registrars. Does include registrars. One six. All right. All those opposed, kindly raise your card. Penny, do you have the selectmen again this time? Okay. Thank you. Right rear bleacher.
Two six. Twenty-six.
Two six. Right front bleacher.
Six.
Six, thank you, Marty. Right rear floor.
Sixteen, one six.
One six. Right center floor.
Nine.
Nine. Right front floor, including advisory committee and school committee, and selectmen.
Three.
Three?
Yeah.
Okay. Left rear bleacher. Three one. Left front bleacher.
Two.
Two. Left rear floor.
Sixteen, one six.
Thank you, one six. Left center floor.
Sixteen, one six.
One six. Left front floor, includes moderator, clerk, and registrars.
Two.
Two. I declare that the motion passes via a vote of one hundred and seventy-three to one hundred and twenty-seven. We return now to Article Four, but before we do, I just ask everyone to pause for a minute, take a deep breath, perhaps stretch, I'm not sure I can call it the seventh inning stretch, but just stretch your legs, relax for a minute. All right. We're back in session. Article Four, the annual budget. On the motion, Selectman Chairman Marty O'Toole.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town raise and appropriate seventy-three million, three hundred and sixty-four thousand, nine hundred and fifty-one dollars, and transfer from the Gulf Enterprise Fund sixty-six thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars, from the Waste Enterprise Fund two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and forty-six dollars, from the Water Department Enterprise Fund three hundred and forty-two thousand, six hundred and eighty-four dollars, from the Transfer Station Enterprise Fund one hundred and sixty-four thousand, eight hundred and forty-six dollars, from the Water Waste Enterprise Fund seventy-eight thousand, one hundred and ninety-nine dollars, from Title V Assessments, six thousand, eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars, from Debt Premium Reserve, three thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine dollars, from the PEG Access Cable Grant, one hundred and twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars, from Overlay Surplus, one hundred thousand dollars, and transfer from the Wind Turbine Revolving Fund, two hundred thousand, and from Solar Array Revenues, two hundred thousand each, to the General Fund for Operations and Debt Services, and five, I'm sorry, and fifty-three thousand, nine hundred and thirty-one dollars, from the Massachusetts Building Assistance Reserve totaling seventy-four million, nine hundred and forty-six thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine dollars, for the purpose of funding personal services and expenses for town operations, as may be necessary for the fiscal year commencing July one, two thousand and seventeen, as follows.
All right. It's been moved. Is there a second, seconded discussion?
Yes. So, just a quick budget overview. It's a level services budget, it includes increased costs for the operation of new buildings, public safety and library, includes increased costs for general liability and property insurance for the new buildings, and I can say this now, I guess, includes one full-time position of Director of Planning and Community Development, and one part-time custodian, provides for fixed cost increases in employee and retiree insurance and pensions, it funds estimated cost of contractual settlements for five town unions, maintains town's strong commitment to foreshore protection, significantly increases funds for road improvements, historical resources, and beautification. It also increases operational effectiveness through technology.
All set, Marty? From the advisory committee, Mr. Heinemann.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. In brief, the advisory committee reviewed the fiscal year, the proposed fiscal year 2018 budget in several weekly public meetings, and reviewed with the departments, with the heads of each department, their accomplishments throughout the fiscal year so far, their goals going forward into fiscal year 2018, and the details of their requests for each of their departments. Selectman O'Toole went over some of the highlights. Overall, the general government funding, it represents fifty-point-eight percent of the budget, the other approximately half, forty-nine-point-two percent, is in the schools. One other, or two other major areas, cost drivers, there is funding included in here to combine the two separate units from fire and police, which have been doing the dispatching into one new consolidated unit, that is reflected in the budget under the combined authority of the police and fire chiefs. And with respect to the schools, the, the primary cost drivers, I think most folks in this room have heard before, have been increases in special education, particularly outplacements over which the school department has, doesn't have a lot of ability to control. And there is also budgetary adjustments to reflect the fact that the sixth grade, in this fall, will be moving to the middle school. I just want to say one point, which is, as we know, the superintendent, John McCarthy, is retiring, and I know he's made a big effort over the years to provide timely budget information, and more detailed budget information, together with his fiscal director, Paul Donlin, in getting that information in a more timely way, getting more detailed information, including budgets by schools, and that's made the review by the advisory committee and the town meeting a lot more effective, a lot more meaningful, and I want to give him a lot of credit for that over the years, for achieving that. So, with that being said, the advisory committee unanimously recommends approval of the budget as printed in your booklet.
Okay. So, what you'll want to do now is turn to page twenty in the advisory committee handbook, because what I'm going to do is what we do every year, I'm going to go through the overall department, departmental line item numbers. If you wish to ask a question on any of the departmental line numbers, or any of the departments, when I call out the particular number, just say "hold," and we will go back and discuss the held item. At the end of the process of looking for holds, we'll vote all the non-held items, and then return to the ones that were held. So, here we go. Line one twenty-three. Line one thirty-one. Okay. Line, line one thirty-one. Line one thirty-five. Line one forty-one. Line one forty-five. Line one fifty-five. Line one fifty-eight. Line one fifty-nine. Line one sixty-one. Line one seventy-one. Line one seventy-five. Line one seventy-six. Line one eighty-two. Line one ninety-two. Line two-ten.
Hold on two-ten.
Two-twenty. Hold on two-twenty. Two-thirty. Hold on two-thirty. Hold on two-forty-one. Two-ninety-five. Three hundred. Four hundred. Four-ten. I heard a "hold" on four-ten. Four-twenty-three. Call for "hold." I did not hear a "hold." Five-ten. Five-forty-one. Hold on five-forty-one. Five-four-nine. Hold on five-forty-nine. Six-ten. Six-thirty. Six-fifty. Seven-twenty. Nine-ten. Nine-eleven. Nine-twelve. Nine-thirteen. Nine-fourteen. So I'll repeat the "holds." I'll go back. The "holds" that I heard were one-twenty-three. Two-ten. Two-twenty. Two-thirty. Two-forty-one. Four-ten. Five-forty-one. Five-forty-nine, and that was it. I'll accept a motion to approve all unheld items. It's been moved, is there a second? Moved and seconded, there being no "holds" on those items, we'll vote them now, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So voted and declared passed unanimously, all unheld items are approved. We now return to the "holds," and I'd ask... to the holds, and I'd ask that the person who held each item just come to the fore for each one. Line item 123, gentleman to my left.
Joe Givens, 223 Gannett Road. With regard to 123, 530 and 532, with the precipitous jump in both these line items, I wanted to ask the administration, have they considered all hiring a town attorney rather than paying almost $400,000 in legal services for one year and looking at the precipitous increase from 139,000 to 264,000 and an increase from 110,000 to 130,000? We're paying for legal services almost $400,000. Have we considered maybe hiring our own attorney for half of that? Could someone please address this?
Madam Town Administrator, to answer the question.
Thank you. So, the two line items, Mr. Givens, that you mentioned, actually, and I think Chairman O'Toole explained earlier, that isn't for legal services exclusively. That is for contract increases for the five town unions that include the funds there. A 1% COLA for all our staff is $117,000, so that's what that increase is for.
Okay, thank you.
And as far as Town Council, there is a $20,000 increase. The town has been funding the FEMA MAPs out of that, which is an additional cost that you just funded out of free cash, but also we've had an increase in litigation, the past year, that we expect to be resolved this year. We've already resolved one of the cases for which that was driving.
So, for clarification, the $264,349, what is the breakdown of that?
That include, that's a lump sum amount that includes a reserve for contract settlements, labor council costs, grievance arbitration, unfair labor practices, personnel hearings, and it's all inclusive, all inclusive for HR stuff.
Okay, so how much of the $264,000 is dedicated to legal services?
I don't think we have that exact breakdown right there, right here.
Could I say, is it a large percentage of that? I mean...
Last year, our Labor Council services were $40,000.
Okay. Thank you. I have a question also about 599 within there. Could someone please delineate for me what that $10,000 is?
The Finance Director, Ms. Holt.
So, Schedule 599 into the 123 budget is for salary adjustments, and that's merit increases if they are awarded that are in the contractual bargaining agreements.
Nancy, I thought that the Town Administrator just said that part of the $264,000 was for salary increases, and then there's another $10,000 in a separate line item. Why is that?
Correct. The $10,000 salary adjustments is for merit increases alone, if they are awarded. The $264,000 under contractual bargaining is for the cost of living increases in Labor Council services.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on 123? There being none, all those in favor of approving 123 as printed signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So voted and passed by unanimous vote. The next held item was 210, Police. Gentleman to my left.
Scott Greenbaum, 40 Damon Road. And actually, the question I have has to do with 210, 220, and 230 as a...
We'll take them all in one.
All in one, yeah. So, I was doing the quick math here. Basically, the Police go down $200,000, the Fire go down $200,000, and the Public Safety Community Center goes up $560,000, which is a $160,000 increase. I understand we have eliminated two buildings and moved into one, which should create some efficiencies. It is bigger than the two buildings I think we left, but we have combined dispatch, so we should have some labor savings in dispatch because we don't have two people on duty every shift doing dispatch work and stuff. So, I'm just wondering why we are looking at basically a $160,000 to $200,000 increase in the total of the three budgets. And, you know, at this point, because it looks like the personnel changes, I assume the union contract isn't in here yet, but I don't know about that, but that's, I just want to understand why we had a big increase. We should be having some type of savings by combining this stuff.
The Finance Director, Ms. Holt, to answer a question.
Good evening. Just cozy after the mic. So, is it, Mr. Moderator, may I kind of address all three?
Oh, please, yes.
Addressed all three. Good evening, Nancy Holt, Finance Director. I don't think I introduced myself last time. Excuse me. So, the Public Safety Communication Center, we still have all of the dispatchers that we had before. We do still have two full-time dispatchers on at all times, 24/7, and we also have a dispatcher that also does the duties of the supervisor of all the dispatchers. The Police and Fire budgets, what we did was we took the dispatch salaries out of both of those budgets and put them into the Public Safety Communication Center. Police and Fire still had increases themselves. They had increases in contractual costs for normal operating expenses, as well as they also still have step increases that have to be addressed in those budgets. Public Safety Communication Center also has a very small budget for office supplies, and they also have a dedicated training budget, which is minimal. It's a couple of thousand dollars in addition to the training that's in other places for them to access. So, there isn't any savings from the combination of them. It's just an efficiency because now they're all together, and they're all cross-trained.
I would have expected that there would be improvement in the efficiency of the project and that we would be seeing an advantage from the dispatch point of view, and that these people may be redundant because most places don't need two dispatchers at midnight on call all the time, and there should be, this should be reevaluated because that's what, part of the reason why, not just for efficiency, if they're in the same building, but part of the reason that we did this is so that we have a more efficient, more efficient dispatch, and therefore we need less personnel and we can save some money. Thanks.
Any other discussion on 210, 220, and 230? Seeing no one at the mics, all those in favor of approving the numbers as printed signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So voted and declared adopted by unanimous vote. Item 241 was Ma'am.
Jennifer Kuhn, 20 Cary Litchfield Lane. I just had a question...
You might have to put the mic down a little bit. Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Jennifer Kuhn, 20 Cary Litchfield Lane. I have a question under the inspections, 241, the line item Personal Services. Can you break out that number and how many people are actually included in that number?
Well, I can, what I can speak to is I can tell you the difference in the number. It's a, there's a, the new position of the Director in Planning and Development, which just passed. The charter requires a 90-day grace period before implementation, so there's a prorated start, and a 9/12 of the year salary is $65,500.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that? It was two people?
Yeah, so what, what's it, 13? It's prorated.
I see notebooks being opened, so I think...
Yeah, so it's, the actual number is 13, thanks? Yeah, so it's 13 positions, part-time and full-time.
So, that's the Planning Department, Building Department, Zoning Department, and the new position.
Yeah, it's just Building and Zoning.
Just Building and Zoning?
Yes.
Okay. And it was 13, you said?
13.
Any other discussion on 241? There being none, approval requires a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So voted and declared approved by a unanimous vote. Next item is 410, Facilities. And who've we got? Gentleman at the right. No? Ah, gentleman at the left.
Bernie Westerveld, Harborview Road. The facilities manager was one of the first town meetings where I was allowed to vote, and that was presented to us as an $84,000 position. I'm not criticizing the amount here, but for me, it sheds new light on the position of the, let me say this right, the Department of Planning. Is it possible to readdress that question a little bit later during this meeting, Article 15?
Bernie, could you rephrase the question just a little bit?
I would like to make a motion to readdress Article 15 with the new information that I read here about the increase in costs.
I see what you're asking. What you want to do is to make a motion to reconsider, and I think that since we're in the middle of this article, the motion would be untimely. You could certainly bring the motion at the conclusion of Article four, and at that time, we could take a motion to reconsider.
I'm just confused. Are we speaking about 410, Facility?
No, no, we're all set, I think.
Okay. No, I'm just, it doesn't have anything to do with it.
It's all right. Any other questions on 410? Okay, there being none, all those in favor of 410 as printed signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So voted and declared unanimous vote, approval. Next item is 541. Ah, gentleman at the right.
Gordon Price, 48 Mannlot Road. Mr. Moderator, with your permission, I'd like to make a couple of statements before addressing the actual budget, and my comments are related to the budget, and I'd also like to do a disclosure. I'm speaking on behalf of Gordon Price, not Vice Chair of the Council on Aging. I'd like to thank Linda Hayes and her staff at the COA for compassionately working to serve the needs of Situate seniors, often in less than optimal physical facilities. Multiple facility sites are often needed for programming, such as St. Luke's, the Maritime Building, Jenkin School, and others. Programming is limited often due to lack of physical facilities and privacy needs. Many Situate seniors attend programs in surrounding community centers which have been recently built in the last few years to allow for greater programming opportunities. A few facts for the consideration of the town meeting this evening. There are currently 3,001 enrolled students in Situate school system. We are in the process of approving a $36.9 million school budget, represents 49.2% of the total town budget. That, with a little bit of math, comes down to $12,329 per student. There are over 5,500 seniors, 60 people 60 and over in Situate, and the number is growing rapidly. The COA budget proposal is for $221,159, 0.3% of the budget, or $40.21 per senior in Situate. There was an interesting article that appeared two days ago in the Wall Street Journal. Gentleman's name is Colin Miller, and he's the CEO of the International Council on Active Aging. And toward the end of his article, one of his last comments was, "Society is being challenged to respond to a population that does not see itself as old and is seeking to embrace newfound potential which is being driven by science." In closing, Mr. Moderator, I'd like to mention that we, all age groups in Situate, are looking forward to a permanent senior facility that will serve the needs, not the wants, of the 5,500 seniors who reside in Situate. This can be and will be accomplished with the support of our entire community, Town Administration, and appointed officials. Thank you very much.
Further discussion on item 541. There being no one at the mics, approval, this requires majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So voted and declared unanimous. The next item is 549. Who've we got? Gentleman at the center, Mike.
John McLaughlin, 160 Turner Road.
Sir.
As a chairperson of the Stabilities, our committee is, our duties are to advise all aspects of the town, the community, private sector, and commercial sector. With that said, we have to be trained with the correct information. In doing so, I'm constantly going to training classes left and right, and a lot of times not being reimbursed or so on for fuel or the classes themselves. And then we were told or implied that 1/20th of the expense I was reimbursed for, but some of the other members can't make these courses, and there are prerequisites. So, we never had a meeting with the Town Administrator to increase the budget, which was one of our complaints. So, right now, we would like to, you know, see what we can do to have the Town Administrator meet with us to show a budget for continuing education so we can advise the whole town and so on. So, the $5,000 is based on 1/20th of what I do. I spend more than that in like four months. And I've spent $10,000 to $20,000 of my own personal money getting certified and trained. And our job is to advise with the correct information, most up to date. And it's been $5,000 for several years. Before, we had Jeff Dugan, who was the second person in charge for the state of Massachusetts, that were training us, and he stepped down. So, to see current, we'd had to keep going more training. Other members can't make it due to personal reasons or injuries. And as a chairperson, most will come to the chairperson for the information that's the most updated and accurate. And I've helped a lot of other members and committees open space meetings and went around and so on, but to stay current and up to date, for example, the transition plan, I'm more up to date than most people in the town for this, this training, or to advise on how to do it. So, we want to be included, like we're supposed to be, to advise these things with accurate information. So, at this time, I basically want to see if we can increase it or release more funds so the funds there can be used mostly for education and training, because we are to
Further discussion on 549. Seeing no one at the mics, this requires a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So voted and declared unanimous.
I think we've got them all.
And I believe that brings us to the end of all the holds. So, what I'm going to do is just ask for, I'll call it a reconciliation vote, just so that Madam Finance Director is content. You will recall at the beginning Chairman O'Toole made a very lengthy and technical motion that totaled $74,946,689 with various sources. I'm going to call for a vote on that motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So voted and declared unanimous. Thank you for your patience. Article On the motion, Selectman Harris.
I move that the town transfer from available funds in the...
I move that the town transfer from available funds in the Waterways Enterprise receipts the sum of nine hundred fifty-three thousand, one hundred and twelve dollars for the purpose of funding the Waterways Enterprise Fund for the ensuing fiscal year commencing July first, two thousand and seventeen as follows. For personnel services, three hundred eighty-one thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight dollars, and other expenses, five hundred seventy-one thousand, six hundred and twenty-four dollars.
It's been moved, seconded, discussion, Selectman Harris.
This is just one of the first five. They're all housekeeping articles. I do have some things I'd just like to say on each one of these. A lot of stuff was mentioned earlier tonight, so I'll just say brief, you know, very, very quickly what's going on with the Waterways Commission the last twelve months, and we heard a little bit about it, and I can elaborate a little more if people need to. But we have some mandated electrical updates that we had to do at both town-owned marinas, as well as what we, the gentleman asked what the de-icing pumps were. Well, basically, just to tell you quickly, in case those of you that don't know, that's to keep our floats in the water year-round. We save a lot of money, and it saves a lot of wear and tear, taking our floats out, and then they're stacked in the parking lot. It's not real nice to look at. This way here, we can hopefully keep them in.
From the Advisory Committee, Mr. Burns.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. As Selectman Harris suggested, this is an annual article, as with all of the enterprise funds. Waterways Enterprise covers the operating expenses associated with the harbor facilities, Cold Parkway Marina, the Marine Park, Town Pier, and Harbor Masters Office. This is generated, as again with all of the enterprise funds, from use fees, basically moorings and slips. Balance and retained earnings after town meeting is four hundred and thirty-four thousand, eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Thank you.
Discussion from the floor. There being no one at the mics' approval, this motion requires a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So voted and declared a majority vote. I see gentlemen rising to the left. For what purpose do you rise, sir?
Bernie Westerveld, twelve Harborview Road. In a discussion about town finances, I found that the facilities manager that was presented to us a few years ago for eighty-four thousand dollars a year is now a two hundred sixty-two thousand dollar position. For me, that sheds new light on the position of the planning department. Is it possible to reopen a discussion on Article fifteen and ask the town manager for a prognosis on what that office is going to cost us in another, say, five years?
It is. Section twenty thousand, one hundred and fifty subsection D provides as follows. A vote of the town meeting may be reconsidered once and only once by a two-thirds vote at the same session of town meeting. Therefore, to reopen discussion on Article fifteen, it would require a motion to reconsider, a second, and then a two-thirds vote. I take it you've made that motion, or making that motion?
Yes, please. I make that motion.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded. Let's go to the vote on that, and then we'll see where we go from there. All those in favor of reconsidering the vote on Article fifteen signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
I declare that the motion fails. All right. Article six. Selectman Harris.
Widows Walk Enterprise Fund. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer available funds from the Golf Course Enterprise Fund receipts the sum of nine hundred thirty-two thousand, seven hundred twenty-nine dollars for the purpose of funding the Widows Walk Golf Course for ensuing fiscal year commencing July first, two thousand and seventeen as follows. Personnel services, hundred ninety-one thousand, three hundred sixty-eight dollars, and other expenses, seventy-four thousand, three hundred sixty-one dollars.
It's been moved, seconded, discussion, Selectman Harris.
After tonight's meeting, the retained earnings will be about fifty-six thousand dollars, just, just over. As Mr. O'Toole said earlier, we retired the debt in January. We were really excited about this until we kind of found out that we had to do a irrigation system to the tune of a couple million dollars. Without it, the cost is, you know, doesn't matter what type of clubhouse we have, we have to take care of business as it comes into place. I guess the life expectancy, as we've been told, for an irrigation system is about twenty years. So here we are, right at twenty years. And as we discussed earlier, the design, we just approved the design at twenty-five thousand, and then a hundred and eighty-five thousand for the stabilization fund.
From the Advisory Committee, Mr. Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. In an effort to conclude town meeting a little faster than Woodstock took, I'd like to state that the Advisory Committee recommends approval unanimously by a vote of eight to nothing.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Discussion from the floor. Lady to my left.
Yes, hi. Mary Ellen Schloss, fifty Manlot Road. I have some questions about the Golf Course Enterprise Fund. I'm not that, I don't understand a whole lot about it, but to me, it seems like, we're talking about almost a million dollars here for an irrigation system. I, I have a hard time understanding what, you know, what the public benefit behind this really is, and I, I'd like a little more information about how self-supporting that golf course is. I mean, how much do we, as, as town taxpayers, support that golf course? How much is it supported on its own? I think if we're talking about reseeding, you know, that's one thing, but almost a million dollars for a golf course, that seems absurd to me. And I think when this golf course was first created, I thought the idea was for it to be environmentally sustainable, really minimal water use, drought-resistant turf. I just have a hard time understanding why we're doing this.
First of all, you said quite a few things, but let me just try to remember what you said. Yes, twenty years ago, when I was on this board, it first opened up, I too might have had my doubts because it was a sand and gravel operation. But had we not started the course when we did, if we were only into it for ten years, I think we'd be in some serious trouble. Last summer, we saw a drought that I can't remember in my fifty-three years ever seeing something so dry. But yes, Bob Sanderson, our director here, I'm sure he'd support me, that we use types of grass that don't require a lot of watering. But still, we have to have some type of watering. That's why our driving range hasn't looked so great. You know, people used to criticize us for that, but we really couldn't, we couldn't water the driving range. So we were very conscientious about that. For twenty years, we've been paying, I think Mr. O'Toole said, over three hundred thousand dollars. So when we retired the debt, we're, you know, like I said, we were very excited, great, now we can do something with the, with the clubhouse. That was just the first phase, if you remember Mr. Agnew, you know, proposing that that was, you know, we're going to add on to that. Part of our problem is when, and I only golf in tournaments, but part of the problem is that we have such a small clubhouse, and if there's a hundred and forty-four golfers, we have to go down to any one of the other restaurants in the harbor. So down the road, if we could, you know, and we've been talking about things like this down the road, to increase that clubhouse, maybe a small boutique or something like that. And one of your other questions, oh, I, I don't know, you said, you said a lot, I can't really remember. And it has been self-supporting. You know, the balance retained earning is very low, and that's because of the weather that we had last summer. But every year, it does squeak out a small profit.
Lady to my right.
Nancy Marie Young, one sixty-one Captain Pierce Road, again. I was wondering if someone would please explain for some of the people here who don't have a full understanding of what an enterprise fund is, and how that operates, and how it does not affect or impact our, our own taxes. Thank you.
To answer the question, Madam Town Administrator.
Enterprise funds are supported by the users, okay, just like every other enterprise fund. That way, all non-golfers and residents of town that don't golf are not paying for it in a nutshell. The weather, same with the Waterways and Transfer Station and the others.
Just to add a little bit, the article that's before you is for the operating budget for the year, the maintenance contract, the staff, the pro shop, the electric carts, things like that. An enterprise fund, as Selectman Harris stated, has to be totally self-supporting. There's no tax revenue, general fund, tax dollars used for it. This golf course has never been subsidized by tax dollars. Tiny profit. We hope we're going to squeak it out June thirtieth, but it's never, it's totally self-supported by the revenues for the golf course. The million dollars for the irrigation system was approved, is a capital item. We approved twenty-five thousand for the design of that under the capital plan. The life expectancy of an irrigation system is between twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three years. We've contacted a number of folks who do this type of work. And so what we're doing is, we've retired the debt, we're taking the savings that we used to apply to the debt to build the golf course, and allocating it into our savings account, our stabilization account, what you just created tonight under the special town meeting, so that we can offset the borrowing that we will do, but it will not be tax dollars.
Gentleman at the center, Mike.
James Hunt, Manlot Road. Now that the bond is retired, what is the forecast for retained earnings on an annual basis going forward?
If nothing changes, three hundred thousand dollars a year, round figures.
Say it again.
Three hundred thousand a year, round figures. It depends on the weather, too.
And how much of that to capital?
One eighty-five.
One eighty-five of three hundred. Thank you.
Gentleman at the center, Mike.
Ron Swans, thirty-five Grove Street, Situate. You talk about watering the golf course, and then the next thing talks about the waste, waste treatment. I take it the waste treatment, tying in, the waste treatment goes out to the sea after it's cleaned up sufficiently. Well, why can't they clean up the water sufficiently to give water to the golf course? And then again, why can't they take the storm drains and feed them into tanks and use the storm drains as gray water to do watering and irrigation? That's all. Thank you.
Great question, but it would, would have to have DEP approval for something like that. We have a well, and that's why we couldn't, for many years, irrigate the driving range because it was not to their standards.
All right. Seeing, Mr. Kelly, you were, did you?
I just wanted to address Nancy's question about enterprise funds. Nancy, it's governed by Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three, F. as in Frank, one-half. And of the three hundred seventy-one municipalities in Massachusetts, over seventy percent of them use enterprise funds.
Lady to my left.
Heather Clark, Brockton Avenue. I still am a little bit unclear on one particular part of the financing. Did I understand correctly that capital expenditures are supported, as well as operating expenditures, by the enterprise fund? So the capital loan and the plan that you did was funded by this enterprise fund? Thank you. I would posit that the issue of water isn't going to get easier in town, particularly as all of the development projects continue that were mentioned earlier. I question, again, the public benefit of this golf course. As beautiful as I find the space, I find it difficult to envision a situation where we are going to be able to continue to put water and other resources into this, into this area, and I think it could conceivably serve the public more comprehensively and more equitably if it were a park, rather than a golf course that really requires a lot of ongoing maintenance. So I hope that the planners in town will contemplate that, perhaps thinking ten years from now, when we've expanded all of our wells and we've added, you know, hundreds of houses to town. I do want to say, I think it's a beautiful property. I do enjoy walking there, but I think it could serve a better public benefit if it were used in another way and cost less money as well.
There being no one, oh.
I'd like to respond.
Go ahead, Mr. Harris.
Golf course doesn't use public water, number one, and it goes through a filter system that comes from the well. And to address your point, you do raise a very good point, twenty years ago, you know, when, when, when folks here approved it, they said, you know, jeez, it's just, just a golf course. Well, no, it's, it's, it's more than that. And the, and the board that sat here, and Rick Agnew assured the town, you know, that there'll be other activities, just go by there in the wintertime and see all the folks cross-country skiing, skating on the two ponds, walking their dogs and so forth. We've tried to make it a year-round facility.
Yeah, and I have enjoyed it as well in the winter, which is the time that I do enjoy it. I regret that I now can't go there with my children because of that. But I think that the fact that that's well water really begs the issue of water shortage because it's all coming from the same aquifer. And whether or not, you know, we're drilling it or taking out of a pond, our water resources are limited, and, you know, every amount that we take from one part of our general area is water that is not available in other areas.
There being no one else at the mic, approval of this motion requires a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So voted and declared a majority vote. Article seven, wastewater enterprise fund. Mr. Harris.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town transfer from available funds in the wastewater enterprise fund receipts the sum of two million, six hundred and eighteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars, and three hundred and twenty-seven thousand, thirteen dollars from wastewater retained earnings, and six hundred and fifty-five thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars from raise and appropriate for the purpose of funding the wastewater treatment plant operations and expenses for the ensuing fiscal year commencing July first, two thousand and seventeen as follows. Personnel services, five hundred and fourteen thousand, one hundred and fourteen dollars. Other expenses, three million, eighty-seven thousand, four hundred and thirty-four dollars.
It's been moved and seconded, discussion, Selectman Harris.
Start off by saying, in this particular enterprise fund, we have about two hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars in retained earnings after tonight. Again, a little lower than we would like. Most likely, the Selectmen will be looking at raising rates this summer to offset that. We have an aging plant down at the plant, down on Drift Way. Twenty years ago, the town meeting approved about a fifteen million dollar upgrade. We've done, as you heard earlier, a lot have, a lot of extension sewer lines to the different priority districts. The problem with our plant, located where it is, is the DEP regulations, they're very strict of what we discharge in the North River. So we're constantly trying to, you know, catch up or modernize. Every one of us on the board have been through the plant, seen it firsthand, and it's quite an education.
From the Advisory Committee, Mr. Antonello.
My name's Anthony Antonello, and a member of the advisory board, and also a former DPW director. The comments here, almost one-hundred percent from Mr. Cafferty, the, the new DPW director. Anyhow, we, what we're doing at the, they've done a lot of rehab work at the wastewater treatment plant, and I think they, they almost have a new supervisor there as soon as he can clear a few things up. And what they've done at the wastewater treatment plant is remarkable. They have, they have repaired and reconditioned most of the equipment in the treatment plant, and also in the, in the, in the two pump stations that you have are in, in town. And, and they're also, they have a, a problem with the wastewater they're also, they have a problem with the wastewater treatment plant. It is a discharge problem. The effluent that's discharged, you know, you have to get an EPA/DEP permit. And the problem with the discharge is that it doesn't meet the EPA copper requirements. Before, we used to discharge into a ditch, and then they allowed a dilution of the water in the ditch before it got to the ocean. But now they have eliminated that. So you're, you have to meet your copper discharge at the end of the pipe. And Mr. Cafferty's been working with the consultants to solve that problem. So they've done a very good job down there. They really upgraded much of the equipment. And they, they also are working on the wastewater treatment plant. It, the flows in the plant are horrendous flows. In other words, and it's not all wastewater is the problem. You know, the pipes are very old, and what you have is you have, it's called infiltration inflow. And what happens is that you have a hole in a pipe here, and if you plug that hole, well, the water just goes down and finds the next hole. So you really, it really is a challenge, and they have an infiltration inflow program that they're working on. So they're doing a very good job. Thank you.
Discussion from the floor. There being no one at the mics, approval of this requires a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, so voted and declared unanimous. Just before we go on to the next article, I want to read something from the bylaws. "Any session of any annual or special town meeting shall, unless the meeting otherwise directs by a two-thirds vote, be adjourned at the conclusion of action on any article under consideration at 11:00 PM." It's now 18 minutes of 11:00. So you're going to have a decision as to whether we carry on tonight or whether we return tomorrow. Mr. Harris.
Lastly, the transfer station enterprise fund. Mr. Moderator, I move that the transfer from transfer station enterprise receipts, the sum of $1,037,154 and $80,251 from transfer retained earnings for the purpose of funding the landfill and transfer station operations expenses for the ensuing fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2017 as follows. Personnel services, $231,815. Other expenses, $885,590.
It's moved seconded discussion. Selectman Harris.
Retained earnings after tonight's meeting will be about $367,973. Quite a few years ago, this was a real tough enterprise fund to even break even. I think it was one of Al Bankard's, you know, should be one of his proudest achievements. He's done many in this town, but that is one. We're trying to do this and still provide the same type of services to all the residents that use it. You know, it might sound like a small token of appreciation, but, you know, we still are maintaining a $10 reduction in the sticker fee. All contracts are still in place. Things are going along the same. The MSW goes down to Covantor, and the CND goes down to Boant G. Loeb's company. That's about all. That's it.
From the advisory committee, Mr. Sand.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The transfer fund enterprise fund, similar to the other enterprise funds that we're talking about tonight, is another wonderful example of the town putting together enterprise funds using the revenues that are generated by the users' fees to solely support the cost of that fund, not impacting taxpayers. This one is supported by, as everyone knows, probably stickers, the blue bags, and the use of some of the recycling revenue that's generated from the transfer station to cover the cost fully. Sean had mentioned, at the end of the day, the retained earnings we have in the account is $367,973. And the advisory committee recommended unanimous eight to zero vote in support of the motion. Thank you.
Discussion from the floor. Lady to my left.
Hi, Chris Cerumba, 435 Clap Road. One of the items that supports the transfer station are the stickers. And with the amount of senior citizens in this town, I wonder why the senior citizen discount is, is, you have to be 70 years old in order to get that discount. Is that just an arbitrary age that somebody decided on? Because most things for seniors are 60, 65, but that one item is 70?
60 sounds good to me. Madam Townmaster.
Chris, I don't have a good answer, but I assume that most of the abatements and exemptions that are available to seniors for tax bills are 70 years old. So I would guess that that was the logic. One of the challenges we're having is we've reduced the beach sticker, I mean, the transfer station sticker for the last three years by $10. And you'll notice if you look at the revenue stream over the last three years, it has gone down and the retained earnings have gone down. So we would like to make it as affordable as possible for seniors. We're not in a financial position in terms of the revenues. But if I had to guess, it's at 70 because that's the threshold for eligibility for any tax abatements or reductions in your tax bills for property tax. Okay, thank you.
Thanks for trying. Any other discussion? There, okay, lady to my left.
Heather Clark, Brockton Ave. I feel compelled, having disrespected the golfers in the room, to just say.
Could you identify yourself, please?
I feel compelled to state how much I love our transfer station and how proud I am that it's such a great organization and so well organized. And I've had occasion to see them in other towns. I, as a taxpayer, or as a sticker holder, would be pleased to pay a little bit more for my sticker if it meant that seniors, you know, would have an opportunity to have a less expensive sticker, particularly if the enterprise fund is running well as it seems to be. So I don't know if that's a consideration in order to make things at least a little bit easier for seniors as that population grows.
Could you just tell us who you are and where you live?
I said it fast at the beginning. Heather Clark, Brockton Ave.
You may have lots of visitors.
From the golfers or the people at the dump?
Could be the same crowd, I don't know. Any other discussion from the floor? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, so voted and declared unanimous. Article 9, Water Enterprise Fund. Mr. Harris.
Thought I was all done. I move that the town transfer from available funds to the water enterprise receipts, the sum of $3,715,428 and $330,139 from water retained earnings for the purpose of funding the water division operations and expenses for the ensuing fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2017 as follows. Personnel services, $981,749. Other expenses, $363,818.
Moving seconded discussion.
And retained earnings after tonight will have just under $301,000. We are currently, and I'll just be brief, but we're currently in our third and final phase of the upgrade of the water lines. We should be done next spring. Some of the streets we're doing now, Cornet Stetson Common, Buttonwood, Gannett Road, to name a few. There are a couple of, it was talked about earlier, I was going to jump up. Someone had mentioned, what about if the Dolan well didn't pass, you know, and we couldn't use it? Well, there are some initiatives that we are, you know, taking into account. And one of them is the well number 17, which is Tac Factory Pond Road. What we're attempting to do is put a filter system in that so we can send that right to the reservoir. That has been a kind of a problem well for quite, quite a while. The other thing we've been, we've already approved, we're still working on it, is to raise the level of the reservoir about 18 inches. By doing that, would give us another 30 days of water if we have another summer like last summer.
From the advisory board, Mr. DeWesey.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Just in terms of time and in terms of brevity and the fact that we've spoken about water for the majority of the evening, I feel like I'm just going to go ahead and say that the, again, just to clarify one point for Mr. Harris, Tac Factory Pond Road, that comes off of Stern's Meadow, which we'd be obviously expanding to help replenish that level in the off-season. There's six additional water projects that have come about due to the historical shortage of water. And after review, the advisory committee recommends approval of this article unanimously. Thank you.
Discussion from the floor. There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, so voted and declared unanimous. Just to a previous speaker, I had asked that the person identify themselves. It's only so that for our records, we can identify who was speaking, that's all. I realize it might have sounded, you know, kind of creepy, like, who are you? You know, where do you live? No. So my apologies if it came across that way. Article 10, Mr. Vignani.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town raise and appropriate the difference between the levy net and the levy limit to the stabilization fund in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 45B.
It's moved in seconded discussion. Selectman Vignani.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is an easy one. It's, it's basically a housekeeping one that says that any money that we get above the levy net that exceeds the levy limit will go to our savings account, which is our stabilization fund as per Mass. General Law 45B. And we've been doing this since I've been up here for like 16 years, so.
Thank you.
The selectmen voted unanimously in favor of this article.
From the advisory committee, Ms. Metrol.
Thank you. I'm only going to add one thing because you've said everything basically that we've got in our comments as well. The stabilization fund is an important emergency cushion for the town, and it's been used in the past for expenses such as repairing damage from coastal storms. And it's, over the past 10 years, an annual average of just short of $265,000 has been appropriated to the fund. The advisory committee recommends approval, and we had a unanimous vote.
Thank you, Ms. Metrol. Speaker to my right.
I'm not standing on this motion. I'll follow.
Okay. There being no one else at the microphones, this requires a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, so voted and declared unanimous. Article 11, Selectman Vignani.
Mr. Moderator?
Sir.
Point of order. Dealing with 11, 12, 13, 14, that's not going to happen tonight, folks. So I'm going to suggest that we adjourn for the evening and come back on another night.
No, not Monday night. This room is booked tomorrow night. So it's now seven minutes of 11:00. We can begin work on this article and finish it. Well, now, now's the moment of decision. Let's just take care of this. The bylaw says it takes a two-thirds vote to go past 11 o'clock. So. Yes?
Does this town meeting have, in terms of future dates, to postpone this meeting to? I think I'm hearing it has to be tomorrow night for some reason. Why couldn't it be two weeks from now?
You've heard correctly.
By what law?
By the law of supply and demand. This room is available tomorrow night.
Is it available Tuesday night, May 16?
Couldn't tell you.
I will make a motion to adjourn this town meeting until 7:00 PM on Tuesday night, May 16. And to second it, I'll speak to the motion.
Well, first of all, you have to identify yourself.
Oh, I'm John Whitaker, 594 Country Way.
All right.
And I'm simply making a motion to adjourn to a more sensible night when we'll have town. Okay, we can discuss it if anybody else wants to do it. Second it, and we'll talk about it.
All right. I'm not going to recognize that motion. I've asked for a motion to determine whether the board wants to go past 11 o'clock. And you began speaking before I recognized you so, or before you identified yourself. So we have a motion to go past 11 o'clock. This takes a two-thirds vote. If you want to keep going, vote yes. If you want to consider...
Point of order, Mr. Moderator. When is it appropriate?
You will wait.
Okay.
The motion on the floor is to go past 11 o'clock. If the motion passes, we will continue going. If the motion fails, we will then take up the question of what night to adjourn to.
Is there discussion?
Yes.
Nancy Marion, 161 Captain Pierce Road. At the risk of kind of getting everyone quite concerned, we have a person here who is going to be, who came prepared to make a presentation about numbers five and six within the community preservation article. And he's come from some distance. I was just wondering if there was some way that we could do something with the schedule, perhaps, to just take up 11 and move his items forward so that he could make his presentation and not have to come back. That's just, that's just a piece of information I thought people should have before we vote on this. Thank you.
Okay. Sir.
Bill Schmidt, 33 E. J. Beach Road. I just want to be aware before we vote on this of, or maybe somebody could make us aware, of what the additional cost is. I mean, if we do vote to bring this to another night, there's a substantial expense involved in doing that. So I just want everybody to be aware of that when they're considering that.
The town clerk informs me that the cost would be in the range of $3,000 to $4,000. So, lady to my left.
Mr. Moderator, may I speak to this article?
Yes, you may.
I mean, this motion?
Lady to my left.
Okay, but then I won't speak.
Cindy Olson, Gannett Pasture Lane. I think with the articles that we have left to speak about tonight, especially Article 11, that is very, very important for this town. And at this time of night, I feel it's irresponsible to start this discussion. A lot of people here have been up since 5:00 AM to go to work, and they have to do the same thing tomorrow morning. And this is a very important discussion, and I don't think we should be discussing it while tired or while we're thinking about, I got to go to work tomorrow. So I would encourage you all to think about postponing this to a time when we all have fresher minds.
Gentlemen to my left.
John Whitaker, 594 Country Way. I do not think it's appropriate, I certainly as second, the last speaker, to continue this meeting. We have very important matters before us. What is the compelling need to run on and on and on late at night? Look at how few people are here. I'll bet we have less than 2% of the voters are Sichuan here. That's not right. And I, I know many people that are unable to stay here even as late as 11, never mind 12 or 12:30. I mean, to save a relatively small amount of money. We don't talk about not having selectmen meeting, our school committee meetings, thank God, so we can save the janitor bill. So why do we do that with town meeting? This is something that has seriously concerned me and many others for years, and now I'm talking about it. Don't do this. Close downtown meeting ended at a reasonable hour for the sake of the people of Sichuan, for the sake of good work on these articles. And I've said enough.
Gentlemen to my left.
Kelly Huffman, 66 Turner Road. I guess I have a completely different perspective. Some folks went out of their way to get here tonight. Part of the reason this is difficult is because it does take a lot of time when people work in Boston, people have to commute back, people travel. And so when folks make the effort to get here the night of town meeting, I think the town meeting should try as hard as they can town meeting should try as hard as they can to get stuff done. I, for one, won't be back if we have to adjourn. So I would prefer to finish tonight.
All right. It's one minute of 11:00, so I think I can give you 30 seconds.
Jennifer McMillan, 34 Thomas Ave. I'd like to put a motion to vote is to extend or end the meeting.
So the motion is to go past 11 o'clock. It doesn't matter to me, I'll be here one way or the other. It's really, it's up to you and what you decide is appropriate. It requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of going past the hour of 11:00 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed.
No.
I declare that the motion does not achieve a two-thirds vote and therefore fails. I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting to presumably tomorrow night.
Can I make a motion to adjourn the meeting in 15 minutes so we can get this man in?
It's not what the bylaw says. I'm sorry.
Make a motion to adjourn if we can get to our meeting.
Okay, there's a motion to adjourn the meeting until 7:00 tomorrow night at this location. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted and passed by majority vote.